We're going to call a meeting to order. This morning, we're going to do a silent prayer in honor of our former Chancery clerk, Tommy O'Garn. So let's stand for a silent prayer. Amen. Can I get Mr. Bradford to lead us in the pledge?
First place, please. Pledge the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the proponent for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes for July 2021. Can I get a motion?
No motion.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines.
Uh, President, can you put the mic back on?
He said it not working.
Oh, they're not working?
Yeah.
Uh, with the necessary corrections.
With the necessary corrections. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gaines. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. Next is approval of a docket. The docket. Have everybody read the docket? Can I get a motion?
No move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
I got some, uh...
You got some discussion?
I'm reading this. Uh, I'm voting against 215-284.
What's the date?
Play number?
What's the date of the docket? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of my financial report. We got the Adams County Sheriff Department report. Do you have them paged?
Yes.
And the Chancery clerk. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. Ratchet, poster, with look great service. M.D. contractor, you're next.
Yes, ma'am. We just, uh, we're working for the...
If you want, you can go to the podium, you can go to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, we're just working, uh, we've got a contract for the DOT where we're cleaning the hazardous trees and brush off the, off the, off the DOT right of ways. And, uh, we just, uh, I mean, we've got a verbal approval by the MDEQ, but they want us to have your all's blessing for us to burn in your county. I mean, for reduction, we're going to utilize a pit, an air curtain burner, you know, to, so there won't be, you know, shouldn't be any smoke or anything, you know. But, uh, they just required us to have your all's blessing to do so in the county.
Anyone have any questions?
Uh, Mr. President, the only question I have, you say y'all gonna be cutting limbs?
Right.
So y'all gonna pick them up in a timely manner?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, I mean, well, I have trucks right behind us picking, you know, stuff. We're, we've been working for two weeks out here because I've been waiting on, you know, the signature from, signature from you all.
Okay.
And before I can start hauling and reducing.
So where y'all planning on burning on y'all place or where?
Well, I've, I've got a place, uh, oh, east on 84, out there two, three miles from 61, you know.
And since we don't have a grime bay in our own, uh, this doesn't make sense in rhyme with that. I don't see no problem with it.
Okay.
So can I get a motion?
No.
Got motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion?
Uh, President, I think we need to, uh, another thing to say, but I think we need to get the fact of it in here and let him hear what's going on with this. We don't want to be no confusion with residents calling and saying, you got a fire, whatever, did you? Yeah, when he had to say that.
I just called kind of a T L N. Fire coordinator, uh, what, what are you trying to?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Darren Smith on the fire coordinator for the county, Chief Arrington, uh...
Oh, okay.
...in the fire department.
Oh, okay. Well, uh, like I said, we're, we've got a spot out here and it's been approved by, verbally approved by MDEQ. We're pit burning, was utilizing an air curtain, you know, to reduce, you know, so there's no smoke and, and, uh, ember's coming off of it, you know. And, uh, you know, we've cleared a pretty good sized area and we got pit dug and, uh, like I said, it's been approved and we just need to, he just requires us to have the, their blessing, you know. And like I said, we're a couple of miles east of town.
Okay, that was it. You might need to get a permit from, uh, Mississippi Forestry because I think they give you a permit for them like that. So you might want to check them off or...
Okay.
To make sure, you know.
Okay.
Because not, somebody, you know, was playing and you don't have any permit, they could have put all that out. So you need to check the Mississippi Forestry Commission and get a permit to bend.
Okay. All right, I'll check on that as well.
All right.
Okay.
So that's, that's a motion out there. So we need to have it all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. Okay, Ms. Lisa Dale, I'm gonna go ahead, uh, with Comstead.
Thank you. And I appreciate, um, getting to go early in the docket with my other court schedule.
She's on the side when, you know.
This is great. Um, I'm before y'all, the board today. I have a client that purchased a piece of property. And when he purchased that property, it was owned by a lady named Aldrin Chapman Jackson. And a homestead lien was filed on the property by a prior owner for the 2017 taxes when that prior owner had actually sold the property in 2014. The homestead lien, one was put on in May of 18, but then the property taxes were paid August the 20th of 2018. The buyer purchases the property in November of 2018. Taxes are escrowed according to the tax receipt. Then in May of 2019, a homestead lien is put on the property again for 2018 tax year. Again, the homestead liens were put on for tax years 2017 and 2018 when the man, Robert Jackson, that the liens were assessed against, had conveyed his interest of the property in 2014. As of now, the tax liens all mature and the buyer owner will, quote, lose the property to tax sale in August of this year. This is a young man in a wheelchair, bought his first home. And the problem is the notice to anyone of the pending tax lien and how a tax lien can be assessed against a non-owner of the property. And we're asking the board, we tried to deal with this before the property was even sold at tax sale. Um, we couldn't get it dealt with. That was with the meeting with Mr. Burns, Ms. Lewis, Linda Ford, and Betty White at the time, before the property was even sold at the first tax sale. Um, I'm asking the board to set aside the tax sales. The, um, I do, I still don't understand how tax liens can be placed against a property that the person does not own the property for the years that the tax liens are being placed against the property.
Yeah. And I talked to Lisa about this particular issue. This is a homestead chargeback. If you don't file for your income taxes with Department of Revenue on a timely basis or don't pay your taxes like you're supposed to, you lose your homestead exemption. So that's the basic that the, that penalty is, is based around. Back around 13 or 14, I believe the couples were actually married, got a divorce, and this is not even Lisa's client, this is just a back history of it, got a divorce. That husband didn't do his taxes, wife kept the property for a few more years, lost the homestead exemption, but it was because of husband's failure, the husband got notice through the Department of Revenue to challenge, but not the wife. We went back and looked at the actual records, uh, and the way the law works is if you have noticed that this chargeback existed at the time that the chargeback came back onto the property, then, uh, you're liable for it. I know that at least one of the years, there would have been no way for the property owner to have known about it when the chargeback occurred, when they bought it. Um, I think both of them can be offset though, uh, but I think it's going to, since, since the timing of when the tax sale occurred and so forth, it might take a, four from the Chancery Court to get it removed. Um, when I talked to Lisa, then I suggested that if the board is, so, so what the property owner is doing, they didn't have notice of the chargeback because of the delineation of the title, they, they didn't have notice of it. So what she's asking is if, you know, because of those circumstances, if we can give them back their homestead, you know, is that, are the board okay with that? If the board's okay with that, then we can...
Proceed.
Yes, if legally you can do it, we, you know, and I think we legally can. I think in one case, or in both cases, we're probably legally obligated to do it, but, uh, either way, I, if, if the board's prerogative to do it, I'd like to go and look at it and if we get a court order, go ahead and get a court order if that's okay with the board.
Uh, President.
Go ahead, Supervisor Gray.
Does that make sense?
Um, so is your recommendation that we do, wouldn't it?
Uh, just give us authority to, if it's, if it's legally possible to do it, then we would ask the Chancery Court to set aside the tax sales.
So moved.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You have anything else?
Lisa, you bail tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, let's get to get it tomorrow and try to get it.
And if I might mention to the board, there, there is not a process that, Brandy and I have discussed this, for canceling these notice of homestead liens when they're filed in the record. And so as a title examiner, even when you are aware of one, there can be gaps of months whether you can figure out how much is owed on it, whether it's been paid or not paid. Um, and it holds up the sale of properties because you can't ascertain the payoff of that lien or whether it's been paid or not paid. Um, if there's some process that the board could consider about how to go in the records and cancel one when it's actually been paid, that would be most helpful to us title examining attorneys.
Yeah, I think there's been a delay between when they could get a cancellation and then when it gets entered into the tax collection office so that you're not looking, you know, one of them gets filed with the records, the first notice of cancellation, the Chancery clerk actually files with the deed records. That can be problematic when, in her case, even if they filed a cancellation, Lisa would stop looking at the, that person back in 1450 when he lost title. She's not going to continue searching when he doesn't own the property anymore on the title exam. And then the tax collection office has to show that it's been, that it's been credited. So there's a delay in that, sometimes seven, eight months.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
This happened about six or seven times a year.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Michael Hurd, he was left off the agenda, so I'm going to haul him up. He's with Beyond.
Air, Air Select, look, air purifier. Look, uh, thank y'all for the opportunity to talk to y'all right quick. And I know we got a quick, quick deal here, but my name is Michael Hurd. I'm owner of Airs Daily. I've been doing this 40 years. We have a very, very, very unique technology that I would like to help y'all monitor the air at your work environment. I would like to invite y'all to take a look at that. We were introduced to the Hall of Fame at NASA in 2017 for this unique technology. And what makes this so unique is that this, this act of pure technology cleans the air and it cleans the surfaces. Oh, we have very, 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 very high-end credentials. We were tested in FDA compliant military lab to be 99.9% effective against COVID. And this COVID is a terrible, terrible, terrible thing, but my machine will combat the flu virus, mold, mildew, carcinogenics. So e- even without COVID, let's hopefully COVID goes away, never comes back, but it still makes your environment healthy for your employees. It gives you peace of mind and it, and it's, it's not snake oil. And it does work. I have many, many, we're helping out many, many, many government agencies, many, many schools and many, 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 many individuals. I'm going to give y'all a product sheet right here. I have four or five different models. That, that unit that you're looking at, can I give y'all a sheet here?
Yeah.
All you do is plug this in. And we have other units that will go in the, in the ceilings. We, you know, we, we, this is kind of what we do. Our companies, we've been in business right at 100 years. We're in America. Do you have any question?
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, how many?
Oh. My big unit did 2,000 square feet and I have a smaller unit, that little angel. I'm ready to help y'all with two or three units right quick or a bigger order, you know.
This is something we have to take on the advisement.
Yeah.
How many square feet with that little angel?
Oh, 500. And what I do about big when I've got to kick one of those in for like an office, you know, I'm very aggressive on this. I want to be fair to you and I, it's exactly what, it's kind of what everybody got to needs right there.
Mr. Bradford? Don't we have something now in place for that?
For what, Steve? Your trace system?
Foot, yes.
Uh, no way.
And talking to Ms. Lewis, she was extremely interested in, I mean, I'm not, I mean, this is the ideal situation. You need one when there's this many people in here with that, this much transmission of stuff that goes in.
I agree with you 100%.
Uh-huh.
I agree with you 100%.
Man, I thank y'all for your precious time. We got all kinds of emails, my girl emails. I can email you back with a quote for 100 or 200. Oh, you know, but I, I'm just, we've sold an awful lot of these and it's, it's not snake oil. It does work. I thank you for your precious time.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And that's something we'll look into.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Doug Wemberly and Mr. Russ Bryan with Neil Schaefer. They're here to talk about the TAP grant.
Good morning. I'm Doug Wemberly, Neil Schaefer Engineering out of Hattiesburg. And I have with me today Russ Bryan. He's a landscape architect. And what we want to talk to y'all about this morning is an opportunity that we've been helping some of our other clients with. That's the transportation alternative grants that MDOT is probably, I believe, today getting ready to advertise. You have until the end of September to put in an application for that. And the other thing that we're going to talk about is a recreation or pathways master plan that can, uh, you know, that we've gotten grant funding for our other clients to do. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Russ and let him go through the details with you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, board, for a few minutes of your time. A little bit about Neil Schaefer. We're a southeastern United States firm, multidisciplinary firm based in Jackson. We have 38 total offices, 16 of which are in Mississippi, and our corporate office is in, is in Jackson. Doug introduced us, but we'll leave a printout, um, with Ms. Hutchins that'll have our contact info. We've got a lot of similar clients to you, worked with a lot of cities, counties, and institutions of higher learning throughout the southern part of the state. Uh, and like Doug said, we wanted to spend most of our time talking about our, our planning experience and then I'll give you a few examples of TAP projects that you could consider. We've provided pedestrian and bike master planning for both, most recently the city of Hernando, small city in North Mississippi, where we identified bike and pedestrian improvements needed within the city. And then soon after that, provided, we're on a team to update the MPO, the Memphis MPO's regional bike and pedestrian master plan. Kind of a follow-up to laws, you know, larger scale master planning is trail master planning, where you take one particular project, do conceptual design on it, and provide cost estimate. And so we've done that for the city of Tuscaloosa for a trail, very impactful trail along the Black Warrior River there in Tuscaloosa. You know, thinking a little bit beyond just traditional trails, we've also worked with the city of Hattiesburg and local counties at a Blue Way master plan, which is a paddling trail, which complements the long link trace. And we think that similar folks, similar users of long link trace will want to stay in the Hattiesburg area and do some paddling along some of the, uh, local rivers and streams. We also do park and rec master planning, where we can assess your parks and recreation facilities, staffing, budget, you know, everything from top to bottom. We provided one for the city of Hernando using a grant that not only identified what was needed within their existing parks, but we looked at their parks from a standpoint of what can generate, uh, economic impact, you know, create new jobs, create more tourism, and create more travel within the Hernando area. And we did that with a team member that did a market analysis of the, the local or the region's recreation tourism. And so we identified new facilities that could generate more trips to Hernando where people are buying meals, buying a tank of gas, possibly spending a night in a hotel, and in so doing, investing within their community. Uh, we, we write grants. We've written several grants through Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries and Parks that are available. We just finished up a round of RACE grants for several municipalities. And then we also write these transportation alternatives program grants. A few examples of those transportation alternative grants or TAP grants. Chain Park in Hattiesburg was developed several phases using TAP funding. And it's eligible because it's, it's the gateway or it's the terminal of long link trace. So it fits into the city's bike and pedestrian network. And, uh, that's what it takes to be eligible is anything related to bike and pedestrian infrastructure or safety. The images on the right are on the USM campus in Hattiesburg. Um, a couple of sections of campus where we needed pedestrian control. Pedestrians were crossing, a couple of busy streets at unsafe locations. And so the, the fence is what the TAP projects funded. And so it's an attractive fence, an aesthetic amenity of campus, but also was eligible because of it being a pedestrian safety component. Okay, I'll be brief. And then a couple, we've worked with Lamar County to do a walking track at Park and then several pathways along the USM campus. Pedestrian plazas for street closures are also eligible, creating placemaking. And then roundabouts are also eligible through the TAP program. And that's, that's all the information we have. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions?
Do you anything like flashbacks or anything along the walking trails?
You can. Things that are sort of accessories to pathways are eligible. Landscape irrigation, lighting, shade shelters, benches, you know, things of that nature. You saw some of the plazas that have been moved through pretty quick. Those are all 100% funded. The only thing that's not are if you need to upgrade utilities, if you need to replace a water line or something of that nature, those are not going to be eligible.
And I'll just add too, the, the TAP grants, the one that comes through MDOT, that's an 80-20 match. That's 80% federal money, 20% local money. And, um, the, the planning grants that, that Russ talked about, those come from USDA. Those are 100% grant funds. And so you can do a, a planning grant to do a recreation plan or, um, or, or a pathways plan with 100% somebody else's money.
What would be the bottom line of the grants, do you think?
Well, the, the TAP grant, we, the MDOT is putting out a letter today. And so you've got a two-month period in August and September to put together your grant application. And then we will probably hear on funding for that toward the end of the year, usually maybe January. That lets you know whether you got funded or not. Uh, the, the little bit of twist this year is that they did a round of this, uh, earlier in the year. And so most of the people who normally apply for them did apply, got awarded. They cannot apply now. They have to finish their projects before they could apply again. So we've got a, there's a pot of money sitting out there with not a whole lot of people looking at it this time. So, um, and then the, the TAP grants are awarded by Commissioner King. He's the one that makes the decisions about what gets funded or not. So that's how those go down.
Anyone have any other questions?
And y'all, y'all made the grants or, or work them up for us? Yeah. Yeah, we would put together the, uh, application, the TAP application. Uh, we probably did that for 10 or 12 different clients this past time. I believe every one of them got funded. Um, and so, but again, that, whether you get funded or not, all has to do with the commissioner. It's his decision. Well, if you're interested, just let us know. Angela has our contact information. I'm going to leave one hard copy here of Russ's presentation that y'all can pass around and look at and just get in touch with us. We'll be glad to help y'all out.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Fairmont, I don't know if he's with workforce. I don't know if he's on the line or not. Is he on Zoom? With workforce? It's not, we're on the line. Okay, we're going to come to the tax objectives.
Is that big?
Okay, no, you got the tax objectives.
Can we get the advertisement sent in place? The Chancery clerk is, or deputy clerk has told me that the advertisements went out on time. There's a post to advertise that we're going to have a tax assessment hearing today. So we need to make a motion to find out the advertisement is appropriately done and get her to hear a, a tax appeal.
Can I get a motion? Got a motion by Supervisor Gray?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gaines.
Question.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, when you say you send it out, what form of advertising did you use?
Goes to the newspaper at least 10 days before the hearing. And this notice went out very, very, like, what, July, what, 16th or so, right after our first meeting? Here it is.
I, I got you, Scott, but in, in...
July 14th and July 18th that went out into the Democrat.
Next time, I think we need to do a little more of this. Next time, I think we need to do a little more than just to the Democrat because everybody don't get the Democrat no more. So we need to find another way, another method to make sure that everybody in the community is receiving this information.
Sure. And this is, reason it's done this particular way, or has to at least be done this way, is by law, we have to advertise in a newspaper with general circulation.
I'm not saying don't advertise with them. I'm just saying we need to find another effective method to get it out to the people. Because if you don't get the Democrat, if you're not reading the Democrat, then you wouldn't have, you wouldn't get that information.
Sure. I agree with that. It can head off a lot of problems at the pass if people look into tax rule. But the legal notice has been done, so we have jurisdiction to hear these tax appeals. Which if we don't find this, then any assessments we make, they're like almost void if anyone comes and complains about it.
I would say advertise with Block City Post too, because a lot of people get that paper. So it would be good to advertise with them also.
We need a motion.
Yeah, really.
We got a motion. We got a motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion carried.
Okay. I need the, can you confirm with the clerks that there's not any more objections that are filed? Now the board needs to open the.
Open the public.
Yeah, open this for public.
Okay.
Public hearing for a.
Yeah, I need a motion to open public hearing. Got a motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
And I know we have.
All opposed, nay.
Excuse me.
Ayes have the motion carried.
I know we have one physically present, and then there's one from Verizon that is on, on the Zoom meeting, so.
Okay.
If you want to call. The Verizon, the Din, the.
The one from.
Denberry is here. We heard this objection. I say that. We've heard objections from them in the past. Would you like to start that?
Recognize Mr. Denberry. Denberry.
Chair, members of the board, I'm Jeff Trotter, our representative of resources. This is our third year in a row to object. The last two years, the objection has been based on the method in which assets were depreciated. I think we've resolved that. This year, I'm being told by my client that the information provided reflects what they believe to be an inflated value of the assets. But they don't know exactly how that value was reached because we didn't get the appraisal cards. The appraisal cards tell us the appreciation methodology and the index. I'm being told that we weren't able to get those from the assessor this year. But I'm also being told that the values placed on certain of the assets, and I put these in our objection letter that was filed. It's five different pins, don't match our historical records. And so we're here to object to that because we think the tax is overstated by around 50, over $50,000. But it may be that we can get it resolved if we can get that underlying data from the assessor and compare notes and see if we can come to an agreement on that. It's just that at this point, we don't, we haven't, we haven't got any, at least that's what my clients tell them.
So Jeff, you, you saying you want to chat with the tax assessor after this, after this hearing, or after?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can do that and, and get the depreciation schedule. Because, I mean, as you know, the last two years, we've had disagreement on depreciation schedule.
Right.
I think we've resolved that. And it may be that this year, that's the same issue is the depreciation schedule. It's just that we can't tell from the information that we have today. But that's what I'm being told by our property tax manager.
We'll pass on it. We'll pass it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the ceasefire.
Jeff, you can come back in if you can't get it resolved. You can come back in and present your.
Supervisor, someone here with Verizon, are they online?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay.
Good morning. This is Anne Marie McKenna. Big good morning.
Good morning.
Were you provided with a cute package or anything?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a package with some documentation. I have a, I have a few points. Um, this had actually started last year, and I've included a lot of support, and I hope it's there with me because information that I was provided with this year was missing certain aspects, things like blood, which is very important, that were in last year's work papers that I, I had been supplied with. So you've got a big support package, but there's reasons for every piece that is included for you. I hope you can appreciate that.
Okay. So for those of y'all who don't have it in front of you, they're stating basically that there's older assets that are no longer on, or in the, in the county? And then they are complaining about the assessment line for several pieces of property? Peggy, have you seen this objection at all? Uh, ma'am, are you saying?
Should I just, what?
Yes, go ahead.
You want me to walk, you want me to walk you through it? How do you want me to do it?
Uh, this is your objection, and, and so you could present to the board, make some decisions of this. However you choose, if you would like to walk us through, you certainly can. If not, uh, if, if you're submitting that everything's in the packet, what we would do is submit it over to the tax assessor who handles personal property and take it under advisement.
I actually want to walk you through, um, if you could pull out the, there's a, there's a document that's together. It's dated, um, 10/1/2020, business personal property. It's multiple pages, and it is our assessment work papers from last year. One, two, four, five, six, seven. There's eight pages, two sides, eight pages.
Let's get, we can get a copy so I can see it. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
Start. Switch to my PowerPoint back. Will that be?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring it up there.
Does not say much.
We're getting copies. We're going to call your, your objection back up in just a minute to go through the rest of it. Okay?
Okay. I, there's also, I'm also going to make reference to there's a page, there's a, a little piece of packet with a gesture of that slide. That also goes part, part to which, what I'm going to cut.
Okay, great. And we'll, we'll call you back up, okay? I mean, we'll, we'll call it, so stay online. We'll call, recall it up.
No, I'm not going. Please don't move me. I'm not going anywhere. Thanks for the month.
Mississippi Portfolio Partners? We have a tax objection filed by Jones Walker, John F. Fletcher, Mississippi Portfolio Partners. Mississippi Portfo, Portfolio Partners. Okay. Uh, they're complaining that their, uh, this is a affordable housing, uh, case. Affordable housing type of, of apartment structures are taxed differently than other properties. Their values, they use, they're, by statute, only allowed to use certain values. They're objecting that those values weren't done. Wayne, are you aware of this objection at all?
Uh, I have not seen the objection personally. The, the kicker on that is by statute, if they do not turn in the recommended information received in the tax assessor's office by April the 1st, there is no change or possibly an increase based on statute. So I don't, I'll have to look to see if there's something in the office. Y'all have, well, like, 10 or 15 of these things?
Right.
Subsidized housing, which the state provides a special pricing on these, uh, units of housing based on their net operating income. And it literally cuts an actual value down to about 10 or 15% of what it's actually worth. But that's the law, and that's what we've got to deal with. But I've, I'll have to look and see. First, I haven't seen the objection personally. And I've got a folder of all the pertinent information that was sent by all the other entities.
Did you reassess these?
Uh, they're reassessed every year based on the net operating income. And if that information's not here.
Did you, did you do, so you did what you're supposed to in the, in all these?
Yes, yes. But I'll look and double check and see if that information was sent properly on time and.
The motion to deny their objection since they're not here is this?
Can I get a motion? Motion by Supervisor Gray.
Sir.
Second by Supervisor Milton. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion carried.
TDC slash Davidson Transport Services?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
This is Peggy.
Yes, sir. We have your objection, Chad. Go ahead.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, so I appreciate y'all taking the time to hear us. This is an objection based on a rendition penalty being applied, not a value issue. So do you have our packet that we provided and sent overnight last week?
We have a ginormous packet, yes.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll try to walk through it as quick as possible. If you have any questions, please stop me. I think it's pretty simple. These, these three PIN numbers are under, under appeal for the same reason. They're all due to a rendition penalty being applied. And in fact, we actually get, uh, filed returns kindly and on Mississippi Department of Revenue forms. This year, we ran into some unpleasant times here in Texas with the winter storms. Our building was damaged during the week of two long, uh, the week long breaks. But we had busted pipes, and so some of the forms that were provided by the assessors were not usable. Which, you know, as, as I'll lay out in this packet here, in what we're being told by Peggy, which I believe is a consultant for Hatties County, is that you have to use the original form that they mailed out. To me, it seems like that's an issue with interpreting, interpreting the, the code rather than actually what it's meant to be there for them. So when I hear original, I mean, it's got to be a wet copy signature, the original copy that we're filing, not the original piece of paper that was mailed to us. This is the first time we ran into this issue in the state of Mississippi. We pull these forms from Department of Revenue site, which are available to every taxpayer on your website. Even with speaking with this, uh, with Jeff, with the Department of Revenue, he said, the reason why they do furnish these forms online or make them available is so taxpayers can use them. We tried to have some discussions with Peggy. We're, it didn't really get very far. She wasn't really willing to discuss. Just provided some, some, this typical code information where she said that section, it was section 50401, or 50207, the original rendition for each personal property parcel must be available to the property tax office under request, which is coming from these standards of acceptance from the state of Mississippi, which is, which is on this first page. I'm not sure if you, which I had just pulled up on the screen, but basically it says, um, there are two reasons, uh, we found that there are two reasons the rendition penalty can be assessed. Failure to assess 10% for any business that failed to file property rendition, which is, this is a standard acceptance from state of Mississippi to the assessor. The second one, number 10, failure to routinely assess 10% of the remissions filed after April 1st. Being that we did file a form that was on the Mississippi Department of Revenue website and had been done in several other counties in the state of Mississippi, we feel like we've supplied, you know, both of those rules there, we filed it timely. The, uh, does anybody have any questions about that?
Yeah, so the question I'm having, you, you received, you got the forms off of the Department of Revenue's website, and you submitted them to the tax assessor's office, but the assessment was put on because it was not the same form that the tax assessor had sent you. Is that correct?
It, it's the exact same form, but it was its original piece of paper that was populated with the company's address and the PIN numbers that come from the assessor. So it's the same set of forms, and I've listed these, we provided these forms within our package. And it shows that, in return, we try to file the forms that were provided because it's got all the information already populated. This year, we had some issues, like I mentioned, with the winter storms. So we had to recreate the forms, recreate the renditions, but they were on that same form that we provided in years past. And what was provided to us this year, uh, after we requested it, just to prove that we should, we filed the same form.
So stated differently, stated differently, the tax assessor's piece of paper that came to you did not get returned to you, but the same information that the tax assessor had requested did get to the tax assessor? Is that what you're saying?
That, that's correct. And we, so we, we provided all the necessary information, signed the correct form. We provided the correct form to the assessor timely.
Madam President.
Go ahead, Supervisor Gray.
Uh, is this their first time doing it?
So first time, Peggy?
No, when they first took over, they were getting penalized for not returning it.
So, uh, is this their first time filling out that form, or they was filling out the other form?
No, they filled out the form.
The one that you gave them or the other?
In the prior years. This year, they did not.
So, that was my question is, I mean, if you didn't fill out the other form all these years, why changed that to the other?
So it's in the objection form that there was an ice storm that caused you to lose a lot of information. You lose the form?
That's correct. And so we had a bust, so storm caused us to lose power at the office for over a week. When the power came back on, the pipes were frozen, and busted the pipes at several locations within our office. And we had significant damage, in which water damage throughout the company, or throughout the, the building. So we had to recreate some of these forms that were sitting in our office.
Does that answer your question?
As a matter of fact, we had to move to a new office building after the, the damage was not returned.
Any more questions?
Other question I have for Ms. Peggy, Ms. Peggy, uh, so, from what I'm hearing, he said that the only reason they did is because they had some damage in their office. So is it the same information that he put on that form that he would have put on the form?
That I seen?
Yes, ma'am. So.
The appraisal manual that we have to go through, the certified appraisers that we have to go with from the DOR, says, um, a rendition shall be sent to all personal property businesses annually. Now, when it says annually, we have to send it, what, what's the original? What they can, what they print out the computer or what I send? And also, in the letter that I mail every year, it says that a computer printout will not substitute for the original. Rule eight says we have to have their original on file from the DOR. The appraisal manual goes on to talk about the rendition that we do send out. So.
My only question is this. I, I mean, I'm not up there, I don't know what kind of emergency situation that they had. From what I'm hearing, they had an emergency and couldn't do it on that form, and they did it on another form?
Right.
And put the same information on that form?
Yeah, it put, said differently. I think you're saying the same thing. They did it on the same form, just not the identical piece of paper that they got from the tax assessor's office. It's the same form, it's just not the one they got.
Not from page.
Right, our form is different. Our form is a little bit different. And listen, they didn't contact us and tell us they had any problem.
So where did this form come from?
Applying.
Applying. They just go on applying.
So Madam President, the question is, if, if they had all these problems that they say they had, why they didn't contact them to let them know?
I would say on this form.
Yeah, that's a good question to ask them.
That's one.
Yeah, yeah.
So, here's, here would be my question. So we, we did contact and said, uh, can you provide the form that needs to be filed? The form that was sent to us, and we provided the email, uh, from, uh, let's see, Ms. Myers, basically sent us the same form that we pulled online. So we're trying to figure out the difference between the two forms, which there is no difference. These are the exact same form. The only issue we're having right now is, without the storm, we filed the form that they sent, or the actual piece of paper that they sent. This is a original form that we filed, since it had a wet signature. So I think the issue is the interpretation of what "original" means. Uh, we've got opinions from the legal attorney or from a attorney in that area that says that's not what the, the law is, uh, that's not how it's written and should be applied. So, um, you know, the original, uh, put in here the re- the original definition here, is satisfied by the presentation of documents produced or appearing to have been produced originally and were necessary appearing to be signed. So the original means you're providing the original signed documents to the state is what the assessor would have to do, not the original piece of paper that was printed by the assessor. There's no difference in the forms themselves or the information that's being provided. The only difference is it's not the piece of paper that they mailed out. As I mentioned before, typically, we do try to, uh, comply with that and, and provide it on the original piece of paper that was mailed out. But this year, we, we could not do that. You know, when you're, when you're filing a form across the state of Texas, this is, oh, I'm sorry, the state of Mississippi, this is the only county in which we ran into this issue. We filed on Department of Revenue forms, which is the exact same form in several other counties with no issues.
Is that acceptable, Ms. Peggy?
No.
The manual says we send out the form and we receive it back. It says if the, if it's not received back, then the 10% penalty, so.
So can, I'm trying to.
We take our time to do it.
Can we, can you please let me know why it's contested?
Peggy, should he have requested another form?
Yes, from.
He had that option.
With his, with his, uh, with his information on it. I sent it to one lady the other day and, uh, with, along with this letter. They've seen this letter. There was no notes on it.
So can I ask you, can, can we ask you for another form where it looks identical to the form that you provided?
No.
What's the difference between the two?
Uh, we, we went with a new vendor this year and redone it, and it's, uh, red and, uh, it has a lot of information on it that, that this other one don't.
So he would, um, this form, the new form, he would have had to provide more information than he has on the other form.
No, it would have been the same information.
But it's how it's worded on that.
Right. Now, if, if this attorney is saying the original, it, so the manual is not any good, the appraisal manual, that the Department of Revenue makes us do.
Right, President, and to the attorney, uh, so, I don't know if you can go online and get the information that this guy is talking about, but if you can go online to other counties and get this information offline and they accept it wherever they sending it to, then why you can't do that here? I'm just asking a question.
I want to stay in compliance and keep Adams County in compliance with the DOR. I mean, I go by what the book says.
I, I, I think what's going on is the term "original" being misapplied here. And, and we did, we stayed very copy of the rendition from Ms. Myers on page, page five. And if you look at that rendition, uh, compared to the one that we were filed, there's, I don't, I don't see the difference here. And this was provided by the assessor. At Adams. And like I said, we do have several other counties which we have to file on the, uh, Department of Revenue forms, which I would believe is, it covers the assessor's, correct?
See, like, see, like, you mean, whatever form the Department of Revenue is sending out, that should be good enough for everybody all the way around all counties? If, if the Department of Revenue is sending it out, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, Jeff Hornet told me it was just a guide, so I'm in all counties, use different renditions.
So everybody got a different one?
Well, may have different ones. Not everybody has different ones, but I'd say probably fifty of them do.
With this one here, we're just gonna take it on the advisement at this time, and then we'll, uh, revert back to it. We're gonna take this one on the advisement this time. We're gonna take it on the advisement and we'll get back with you on it.
Okay, so what, what does that mean? I'm saying that obviously this is a duty issue, uh, being that we feel that we.
Okay, so the board, the Board of Supervisors has heard your objection. We basically understand the facts, and you're claiming that the definition of "original" is different than what a tax assessor is saying. And so the board is going to try to make a decision on that. They have to make a decision before the beginning of September, before the end of this, uh, term. So they certainly will and, and will let you know.
Okay, I sure appreciate your time, and thank you. And if you have any other questions, let me know.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think the only one we have left now is the Verizon.
All right, we back to you with Verizon. Are you still?
Yes, this is Anne Marie McKenzie speaking for Verizon.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, so there is, uh, you'll, you'll see, like I said, when I referenced the copy of the appeals work papers for this year, it was provided copies for some accounts, not for all of the accounts. Two of my accounts were new things. And the paperwork that I was provided with was in a different format from last year, and it was missing things like, um, the actual costs that are actually in your system, and that's, that's what drives the assessment. So I had actually a combination of last year's work papers and this year's work papers to figure out what the issues were. Um, in last year's work papers, it shows the cost, and it also clearly shows the asset lives that are being used. And I have, the easy thing I want to talk about first is I have two classes of assets that are being assessed correctly using a longer asset principal life that should be used. I have antennas that are being depreciated over 24 years and they should be depreciated over 13 years. And I have tower equipment that should be depreciated over 13 years and is being depreciated over 24 years. And that's consistent across all of my assessments that I have in Adams, Adams County.
Okay, so your antennas, what depreciation, uh, should they fall under? What, what type of, you know, property list should they fall under?
For the state of Mississippi, there's industrial class lives put up by the state of Mississippi. Both of these classes of assets are 13-year assets.
There's the industrial, what are they called?
Industrial class lives, page three. The bottom right-hand corner of page three.
There, it's telephone cellular antennas, 13 years. Uh, Peggy.
And, and.
Hold on one second.
It's powered, yeah.
Peggy, this is, she's pulling from industrial class lives, have you seen that?
Yes.
Is that?
Antennas are 13 years, but when the cost comes in for an antenna that's more than the tower, something's going on. So I just started putting everything on the 24.
When the what now?
The cost for the antenna would be 150,000, the tower 20,000. Mm, something's going on there. They're switching the words. So I just started putting everything on it 24.
Uh, Peggy, when they, do they notify you when they replace an antenna or?
They're supposed to. We have a, uh, tower man here I'm gonna get with. I, I understand that, um, and I'm gonna get with and we're gonna do it all these.
What's the lady's name on, on the phone right now?
Anne Marie, Anne Marie.
Have y'all replaced any, have you replaced any of those antennas in the last couple of years?
Of course, with the new technology, yes.
Do you have a list of when, when you replaced those? Do you have a list of when you replaced those so we, we can start the process all over again?
A list of when, well, when we report them is when they act, when they act, when they put them is updated, when they get reported on the, on the year rendition.
And they have been reported.
Absolutely. I also want to make a comment where not all of these, not all of these, um, companies do we own the tower. We're getting, we're, we're getting a 24-year assessment when we don't own all these towers. We're, they're co-located on other pieces of towers too. That we have been classified as tower assets if we have leased from somebody else's tower, if we do a structural, if we, uh, increase structural integrity of another, another tower operator's tower that has to, uh, support our equipment, we don't own all these towers.
But for the antennas, what she's saying is that you have antenna values that were 150,000 and tower values that were 20?
You know, mixed up.
No, they're not mixed, we don't, we don't own towers by what we say. We don't, we're not the power owner by what we say.
Right, so that would be the reason why the pricing is, hold on a second, that'd be the reason why the pricing is, seems strange or whatever?
A little bit appreciated.
Right, correct.
Okay, the next one that you had was?
Power equipment as well. The power equipment should also be 13-year life and is being extended to 24-year life.
So, tower equipment, you'd say still falls under the same class?
Pow- power, P-O-W-E-R, generator, matter, power.
Power. Power. Power television is 13.
Sorry, I speak a whole cast of people from New Jersey, I apologize.
Okay, let's try her name. Peggy?
What, tower television is 13 years.
This is telephone cellular slash power equipment, 13 years.
Tower equipment, not tower.
It's power.
Tower equipment.
Power.
Power.
Power, okay, power equipment, 13 years.
13 years. And she says they were put, that the power equipment was put on a different life or a depreciation schedule.
It may have been. I'd have to go through and look at all of them.
If you look at, and I'm addressing everybody, if you look at, um, that different personal property 2020, um, assessment work papers, here it shows, uh, farther, farther to the right. It's like a couple of colleges run the right where it shows industry ID and industry multiplier. If you look at industry ID, all down industry ID, anything tagged with a 189 is a 24-year asset life. And all those antennas and all that power which is tagged with 189 would be a 13-year asset life.
I'm not seeing that.
Only it's on the front page. Line. Line 23 on the first page, 2024. You sent a rendition for 2022 and a printout for 2024.
That's what we're looking at.
Flip it over.
Line 25 and 21.
Flip that up right there, Angela.
That's for here.
Yeah, that's it. Flip it over.
I'm back, they got mine back to page.
Yeah.
Flip the whole thing over, it's on the back.
Uh, Peggy, excuse me, Peggy. Are, are you notified when these, uh, these tower companies replace antennas and all the stuff?
On the rendition.
Are they, do they notify you when they come in? Cause I'm just thinking, I've got towers on two of my properties, and I see people every three or four weeks in there constantly got towering and climbing, changing antennas, putting new stuff in, in the buildings.
We're supposed to, yes.
Do you think they do?
No. Because, the reason I say that is because like, they get this broadband exemption for 10 years, and after the 10 years, they don't report it anymore. When it should be going on the road, like for 2010, this year, they did not report one thing. So no, I'm not reading all of it.
I don't think one single person has a telephone in their hand right now that is 24 years old or 13 years old.
No, but.
No radio, direct TV, or anything else. They come to your house every five years and change every box in your house. So, um.
But the towers are out there.
No doubt. I haven't seen one pour down yet. That's certainly.
I wanted to reach out and say, uh, I'd like to address what Peggy talking about is the broadband exemption. We report all of our assets. After 10 years, we, when, they, they classified some broadband exemption assets back into the assets that they were and that they really are. And they still get reported. We don't stop reporting them, we don't, there are other companies that, if it's broadband, don't report them at all, we keep reporting them the whole time.
I couldn't find any 2010 on renditions this year that wasn't already there. Oh, and who, 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 uh, decides what's broadband and what's not? You or, um?
It's the type, it's the, it's the type of technology is what decides it.
So when you send me a rendition with, um, broadband written on it for 2020 at $230,000, you've decided all that equipment or that's the way Verizon sent it to you?
Wait, I, I'm having trouble with the hearing, is it just me or?
When you send me a rendition with broadband on it, and it says broadband, for $120,000, do you decide that's broadband? Or is Verizon giving you that information and you putting it on this rendition?
It's based on the asset description and the type of technology that it is that falls under the broadband classification.
Well, like cabling, you, you got a lot of cabling on your broadband exemption. So that falls on the broadband, cabling, cable.
Did you say cable? I'm not, I'm not, I apologize, I don't understand.
Yes, she said cable.
Cable, C-A-B.
Cable?
Cable.
Yeah, we are too.
She said C-A-B, cable. L-E.
Cable. Okay, so what are you saying about the cable?
You've got it on broadband exemption.
She said you have it on broadband exemptions.
Let's get back to the actual objection at hand. Peggy turned it, turned in, or tax assessor, I'm sorry, turned in an assessment they proposed. There is an objection towards it because of two things, basically. Antennas and power equipment are mislabeled under the life. And then the other one is that there's some equipment that should have been, they're saying that should have been removed from their list, asset list.
I did, anything they delete, I delete out there.
Okay, so Peggy, you wanna go take a look at what she's talking about and?
Sure.
Get a response back. Do you, do you agree with what she's saying in that, not that whether it was done or not done, but that the antenna and the power equipment are both 13 years?
Yes.
And so it's just a matter of whether that equipment is in fact that type of equipment that it needs to get that?
That's right. I get within, uh, our tower man, and we'll go through it. But they, uh, the cost started going up on those two and down on everything else.
So, uh, Anne Marie, what we'll do is issue a list of the, uh, the, the equipment list that's been removed so that you, you can see what the, what was removed, make sure that that stuff was off, and then she's gonna go back through and make sure that the property's quote was, uh, classified correctly. And she'll bring us a report by the next meeting, you think?
Oh, yeah.
Anne Marie? Okay?
Now, wait, now, cause when, what, now, is this something, what, what am I gonna end up getting? Am I getting spent copies of something? Where are we at right now?
Ultimately, you'll get an order by the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, you'll get an order by the Board of Supervisors making a decision of whether your objection is sustained or overruled. Um, Peggy did not disagree on two of your, either one of your points. Number one, that property that's not in accounting should be removed. And two, that the property you've listed should in fact be depreciated at a 13-year depreciation schedule. What she wants to make sure is that the property that you're listing is, is falls under that category, in fact, should fall under that category. And she'll give us a report. I'll give you a copy of what she, what she, uh, submits to us and the board will ultimately have a decision by the, by the middle of the month.
You don't log it?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I do need to address, because where she's saying there's not enough tower blocks, that we don't own the towers on most of these.
Okay.
So when she's going to come up with SEC numbers proving that we own the towers, that's one thing. A lot of these are going to be Crown Castle, SBA, American Power. There's a lot of them that we don't own the towers on, so there's no reason that those, that those antennas should not be assessed at a 13-year asset life.
Okay.
There needs to be proof of ownership. If I gotta go back and I gotta give you SEC number, if she needs to come to me, I need proof to see that she's using the 24-year because she thinks, you know, we own that tower. We, we don't own most of these towers. Maybe we own one of them out of nine accounts.
Okay.
But thank you, and we'll get back with you on it. She'll get back with you on it.
Okay, now I need to make sure that any correspondence goes to both myself and my manager. I gotta go to the call screen and I need to make sure the SEC.
Uh, the correspondence that was given on our tax objection will be, that's, that's how we get it back to you. So hopefully you have contact confirmation on that.
Okay.
All right, and thank you. Okay, that's all you have, Peggy? Scott, that's all I have.
Uh, yeah, there's, he, she, she's going to go back and meet with Denberry and then they'll probably have another one for us. We'll close it for now, reopen it.
I need a motion. Is it just going to be, is, is I'm going to be handed what the results are or do I have an opportunity to step more out of this work?
Okay, so this is a tax objection. The board will make a decision. You'll get a copy of that decision. And if you disagree with that decision, you have rights to an appeal of the decision. So. Usually we get correspondence back and forth to make sure that if there's something that we can brainstorm our way through, we can figure out, go ahead and get it, get it settled. So. But you're only required to get a, you're only required to get a, a copy of the order of the board. So.
Okay, but I just want to make sure, because, oh, the tower ownership is such a huge thing. I want to make sure that that's properly noted, you own some towers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, I need a motion.
Thank you.
I need a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray.
Certainly.
Seconded by Supervisor Wilson and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have the motion carried. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the city government business if any. Okay, I have some. I talked with Mr. James Johnson. He gave me a call the other day, a DM, about the ERBE grant for the Quagga Providence Road, the bridge, to see if the county wanted to, uh, share the cost, pay for the cost with them on that bridge.
Madam President, uh, my thing is, uh, I mean, they're getting used to tax money just like we getting used to tax money and, uh, I mean, I think they've used, they used tax money to take care of it.
Okay, and I did tell him that we had a couple of bridges ourselves that we was working on, you know, like Robbins Lake and I think the McBird and stuff like that. So.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Gray on that. We, uh, we got a lot of bridges in Adams County that we're, we're trying to repair.
Okay.
They only have like a green whole city, don't they?
Right. Okay, all right, so we'll move on from that. Okay, departmental reports. Um, Ms. Anna Thales, you want to go ahead?
I have three things today that I want to request. Um, we had the power phones in place, um, that we were not using in service and a purpose, where it, it has the caller to look at it and tell you to push us, to act the person when they call, which they get training on that anyway, so it did serve us a purpose, so I disregarded that. And I'm trying to see if I can get the 911I in place of that. The 911I is basically, when the caller calls in on 911, we have a link that we can ask them if we can access their camera. It's not tapping into their phones or, or charging them a fee. If something is going on out there, we tell them, can we access their camera? We can see what they're looking at. If it's a fire, a fight, a shooting, or whatever, and they're recording, we can record it to our console, which stays on there for at least 30 days. After that 30 days, if we are subscribed to them, we can save it to a folder. Where if they do an investigation or anything, then we can be able to pull it up again. Also, wise in progress, and we are looking at it, we could share it with department heads as well. If they're sitting at home and we can send them a link, they can see the same thing we are looking at. So it's really not only just benefiting dispatchers, it's benefiting law enforcement and investigation as well. The cost for, uh, the power phone was like 8,000 and some dollars a year. And the cost for, for the, uh, 911I is going to be a little more because the first year, uh, they're saying if we use it with the Rapid SOS, it'll be 9,500. Uh, after that, it will be 7,200 a year. So we're requesting to get that in play. If we use it through the Rapid SOS, it's going to cost more, maybe like a thousand dollars more.
Any questions?
I really don't have a question. Are you going to put this in the book, like this budget process?
Yes, we're trying to put it after this.
I still want to comment. It is going to wash because she's doing away with one thing and adding something else, so it's no material financial difference.
Sounds great.
I've been going, uh, oh, how many, how many, um, people use it, uh, this is, you know?
With dispatcher centers, we have Dixburg that's using it, and it's a lot more centers, because we, we, we talk with them to see how they like it. We let them use it first. And, uh, it came in play real well. They, they having a good time with it because they can see what's going on. As a matter of fact, we used ours the other day where the lady called, said she had a grenade in her garage. And we asked if we could access her camera so we could see what she's looking at. We did access it and she did have a grenade in the box. So, you know, it comes in handy, as long as we tell them, we're not charging them a fee, we're not tapping into their phone or anything. All we're doing is accessing their camera and once we hang up from them, that's it. A lot of people say, sure, because they out there recording the scene anyway. When you got something going on, everybody got their phones out, we can record it to our console. That way we can always go back to it if they need it for investigation. So.
So you're telling me, once you access their cameras and see what they are looking at, then when you disconnect that access, you no longer can go.
No, we have no more access to your phone.
Okay.
We can do a demo if, if you're interested. We can let one of y'all call 911, where they're sending you a link and you can see we can access your camera, where we can see everything in here.
From what I heard now, she say once they hang up, that's it, but they have the information that they got prior to them hanging up.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's recorded to our console. Yeah. You can either record it or you can take a picture.
And it's real context. You can actually text while you're on the phone.
So how are you doing this when you're accessing there? Say, I call in and I want you to access my cameras. How are you doing it by my location or what?
Yeah, once you call in to Rapid SOS, it automatically will tell us where you are. It, it only works on smartphones. If anybody have a smartphone, it works on smartphones. We send you a link to your phone. All you do is click on it and accept it. Once you do that, we got access to your, to your camera.
That's through that link?
Yes.
Okay. I got it.
Any more questions? Okay, also, I want to request, uh, a vehicle for our department. We do need a vehicle for our department because we have to travel to different dispatch centers for training. Also, um, we have to go to class and conferences and stuff like that. And instead of us just getting paid for gas mileage, we could have a, a vehicle for our department where we can use to do something.
Uh, and if I have any questions on that or?
Uh, I don't know. Is, is that something they get ranked for or?
Okay, I did talk to the grant writer. She did say that they do have a USDA grant, where it pays 35% of them.
It pays 35%. You're going to apply to that grant?
I just need permission from y'all.
You, you talking about, uh, something, explain?
Yes.
You're going to apply to that grant, so we need a motion. Got a motion by Supervisor Gray. Seconded by Supervisor Gaines and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have the motion carried. Anything else?
Yes, I have one more thing on, on, again. I wanted to request to see if the board approve of us trying to get us a building. Uh, down at where we is, it's, it's just got worse, so. We, we just trying to see if you are looking to try and find us a new location.
Andrew, myself went down there the other day. Uh, it's, it's, it's pretty bad, but, um, it's, it's something each one of you all need to power again.
I've, I've been down there, I've seen them. They, they live, and they, and they weren't being in horrible conditions.
So we, uh, we'll discuss that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let Mr. Richard go from the airport.
Thank you.
And he can back the walk.
Thank you.
And he may have some good news for us.
Madam President, Supervisors, um, we just got through with our FA inspection. Um, it's our FA audit every year. Um, in 2019, before COVID, they came in and found 18 items at the airport. This time they've come in, they found five. Um, two of them were taken care of before he left the airport. So it leaves three outstanding, uh, findings. Two of those findings will be taken care of with our new runway project. Um, the last item that we have to come up with is the testing of our ARF truck. Um, I've contacted the county fire, city fire. I've contacted several fire agencies in the, in the area, trying to find somebody who can test our foam, uh, on our truck. Um, the only one that I have found so far, so if anybody can give me some suggestions, that'd be great. But the only one I've found so far is coming out of Dallas, Texas. And they want to charge 2,500 to do it, and they said that they probably won't pass the first time. So they'll probably charge me another 2,500 to test again. So. It's something that I really need to look into and try to find somewhere closer to Mississippi that can test foam. Because there's got to be fire departments that you do foam testing throughout the state, so I'm still looking into that, but that's the only thing I have at the moment. Um, as far as our air service study, it is not 100% final at the moment. However, I do have the computer software portion of it done that was given to me. And to do the city or the county of Natchez, and Natchez, you know, altogether, just their area code, we're looking at about 400, uh, passengers flying out of Natchez. And now, if you do this study on the gener, um, generated portion, it's showing two strong locations coming out of Natchez. Um, and I really didn't want to get a lot detailed into this, but in 2019, it looked like everybody was going to Orlando, Florida. In 2021, it's showing MSY, so New Orleans. Um, so the first quarter in 2021 shows everybody going to New Orleans. Um, there are some other, yeah, areas, um, Alexandria, Jackson, Baton Rouge. There are other small, you know, portions of them going out, but the major person there or the major airport at the moment is MSY. Um, but this study, like I said, I, I've only put in the zip code or the area code and the, uh, coming back and putting in for the PDU, which is passer data each way. So. Um, just putting it, with them two criteria, it's showing Natchez and that's showing out that there is a need or a possible need for a charter flight out of Natchez, Mississippi. So there's good news on that portion. Um, the airport has already completed its budget. It should be pretty much the same as it was last time. I just got to get permission or approval to get it submitted to. Uh, but I'll get that submitted as soon as I can get approval on that. But other than that, I'll answer any questions y'all may have.
Y'all have any question for?
Madam President, my, his problem question is that, that information you brought up about, uh, you got from Dallas. Have you, uh, communicated with the other airports and the fire chiefs or whatever they, they do and found out what, what they're doing or who they're using?
Yeah, so most of the airports that I've found, larger airports that I've found in the state of Mississippi have a different type portion of foam. Ours is not a pre-mixed foam and theirs is, so they don't have to have that testing required. It's only the smaller airports that have the pre-mix or the, where they mix together when it goes out, is the ones that have to have the testing. So I haven't found nobody small. People like Greenville, Mississippi, Tunica, like that, they've surrendered their 139 certificate. They no longer have to do that. Now, the FA inspector is requesting that Adams County surrender their 139 certificate. And I told them absolutely not. We're going to hold on to it as long as we can. And what that really means is if there's an airplane, uh, with more than 30 seats, it can still come into Natchez. Um, if we surrender the 139 certificate, any kind of passenger airplane with more than 30 seats would not be able to land here. So we're going to hold on to our 139 as long as we possibly can.
You looking for foam or?
It's got to be the foam testing to, to tell us how much proportion comes out the nozzle when it comes out. I've tried Ferreira, I've tried Global Air, I've tried them all, really.
Tried the fire cabinet?
Uh, I have not talked to Luke Smith. I can call him.
Okay, I, I can reach out to him too, to see if they do the, the test. I know they do test fire trucks up there, so they might do that too.
Yeah, but I don't know if they're able to do that foam, because they say it's a new refractor test that they have to come up with and get that result. Um, but I can contact Luke, you can contact him, but like I said, I'm just trying to find some way. I got until September 1st to have it completed.
So you need the foam testing?
The foam testing.
Okay.
All right, that'd be good. You have anything else?
I don't.
That's all right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Nelson.
Thank you, y'all. Y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Ms. Gray with Pam.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, just coming this morning, just with a recommendation. We did have a, um, a COVID task force meeting last week. And we're trying to combat a couple of things that we dealt with last, uh, well, I won't say last. We had our big influx of COVID, um, about six, seven months ago. So my recommendation is for, if you do travel or, um, especially being a county, well, this is for county employees, if you travel to get a screening before coming back to work. Um, I put in my budget or I'm going to purchase some rapid COVID screening and it takes about 15 minutes. And we do the screening and my office will set it up. Um, that's just kind of to alleviate the department closing down and things like that.
We, uh, had a task force meeting last week and, uh, we did have the county employees, this was the beginning, I found out they tested positive. Thanks, Ray, to come and, uh, talk about that. And, uh, they had task force meeting. We discussed that, I mean, she brought up that any county employees that travels to a conference or out of town, once they come back, they need to be tested. She has the swabs where she could test them before, uh, going back to work. And that's just to prevent our office closing and, uh, having, you know, affecting any other employees within the county. So I, I thought that was a great idea.
Not a perfect system, but I think it'd kind of help alleviate, even if I have to retest them, um, in three or five days. Because I think that's what the CDC is recommending, especially if they fully vaccinated, retesting, boy, testing in three to five days. But I think it'd help us with, uh, moving forward with, with the new variant and all of that coming forward. But I think it'd help us with, uh, moving forward with, with the new variant and all of that coming forward.
Madam President.
Okay, Supervisor.
Um, I know that a lot of people do not want to wear the mask. But the health department recommend both people that's been vaccinated and the ones that haven't had to vaccinate, vaccinated. Uh, wear their mask indoors. And, uh, you know, last time, we don't, we, we, we done been on this rodeo before. And we had a lot of employees in the county, uh, came up positive. And we have a lot of employees in this county with underlying health conditions. So I don't think it's fair to the ones that have underlying health conditions. For people that take it up on their own, that don't want to get vaccinated, that's their business. You can't make nobody get a vaccination. Uh, but when you enter a county-owned building, I think you need to have a mask on, Madam President. Matter of fact, I'm gonna make a motion that when you enter a county-owned building, you need to have a mask on.
You heard the motion?
To protect the safety of the citizens in this county that work for this county.
You heard the motion from Supervisor Gray? Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Motion for a last second.
Madam President, I'm not mad, but I just wanted to put it on the table because I feel like, uh, it getting to a point where this virus is so bad and is attacking our kids. And when it come to choosing safety of the community over money, I think that's the reason they elected us to do what's best for the community. And we can't put this in the hands of our employees to, like, like they're gonna take it up on their own to, to wear a mask. They have shown us that they're not gonna wear a mask and they're gonna contract the virus. And, and I just hope don't nobody get sick and die in this community, especially, well, matter of fact, let, let, let me back up a minute. We done had employees to die that work with this county, with the virus. We have so many employees that have underlying health conditions. And we need to take it up on our own to try to keep them safe. And I know people don't want to, I don't want to wear this over my face, but I'm not only protecting me, I'm protecting other people. So Madam President, that, that's all I gotta say.
I'd like to say this here. Um, I'd like to say here, by the way, a mask to, um, whether you've been vaccinated or not. But I, I've noticed when we put on that mandate, uh, to county employers, to anybody. I would still walk around this county and I would see employers without their masks on. When you mandate someone to do something, they don't do it anyway. And, you know, you can ask, you can tell them or whatever. And it is to help the safety of the other employees. You know, I tell them, you know, sometimes it's not all about you, it's about others too. Uh, I recall telling a man one time, trying to give him a mask because he didn't have one going in a store. And, and I said, uh, sir, do you want a mask? And he said, uh, no. And I said, uh, well, it, it would help you, you know, and that's when it was really bad as it is now. It would help you, uh, for your safety. And he said, I gotta die some kind of way. I say, well, I tell you this. I say, well, why don't you put on one for the safety of others? He made a statement to me, they gotta die too? I said, oh, well, okay, uh, go ahead. There's nothing else I can say to you. So, you know, you, you can force people, when you force people, it's, sometimes they won't do it just because you're forcing them. So I'm just gonna ask that everyone, please, you know, just, just by, it does not discriminate, you know, against age, race, gender. It does not discriminate. So I'm just gonna ask you to wear masks. I'm not gonna mandate it, but I'm just gonna ask that you please wear masks, you know, when you're inside.
Madam President, so we move clear, clear.
I was just gonna ask Raven a question. Um, I've talked to a lot of healthcare, I knew this was gonna come up. And I've talked to a lot of healthcare workers, and most of them, like yourself, are wearing masks, but they're still sick. They, they still gotten the virus, the Delta variant. This is contagious, this is chickenpox, I understand? Whether that's on surfaces or whatever, uh, I don't know if you know that or not, but they're, the, the healthcare workers saying the masks are ineffective because they're all sick. Uh, doctors, nurses, luckily, uh, most of them were vaccinated and their symptoms were pretty small. They were tested positive, but maybe don't have any symptoms today, symptomatic. Um, do you disagree with that?
Well, I, I think that everyone should wear the mask. I, I do understand that it doesn't, um, eradicate you from passing the virus or, um, anything like that, but I know it protects me. I feel more comfortable. It does have some form of protection, and my guidelines come from the CDC, and they're recommending the mask, so.
I'll just say.
That is true with what you're saying. You still get people that's getting sick with the mask, but I know me, I'm gonna protect myself and people, you know, my family. Because I'm around a lot of people, and I have to have some form of protection besides my vaccine, so.
I just, I've noticed a lot of flip-flopping with the CDC.
It is.
The mask, the good mask on, back and forth, back and forth. I think it's a personal choice of this, this.
I think you gotta understand too, that this is, this is a new virus, and everybody's learning, even the experts, everybody's learning. It's a month-to-month thing, really a week-to-week thing. So we're all learning, but like I said, all my guidance come from the CDC. They recommend the mask. That's what, you know, I'm gonna, for me and my family. So mandated is one thing, but I'm definitely gonna go to the departments and just go over how, what the CDC is recommending with, you know, to kind of keep down COVID from spreading.
It'd just be hard for us to mandate something, and, and you've got, uh, two hundred thousand people a month coming across the border unmasked, untested, and being shipped all over the country and just dropped anywhere in this country. And that's why this fire, this Delta variant, has gone all over the country. Not one part of the country is not, just, do not have it right now. And then, you can, you can blame a lot of that on that. I'm, I'm quite sure what they did at the, the bus station here two, three weeks ago.
What's the impact of the virus?
That's the kind of thing, you know, it, it is, it's crazy to, to do that. We're, we're suffering, a lot of people are dying. Yet we're shipping people all over the country that have not been tested, and aren't wearing masks. It just makes no sense whatsoever. Thank, thanks for your help.
Madam President, I just wanna make this perfectly clear. That wasn't my recommendation. That was the recommendation of the CDC. That we need to wear masks indoors. That's not Ricky Gray's recommendation. And because of the new, uh, Delta virus that we have, uh, we, we've been through this before. We, we know how dangerous, uh, the coronavirus was. They say this is more important because it's attacking kids. And, uh, I just wanna let the record, keep the record straight that this is not Ricky Gray's recommendation. This is the recommendation from the CDC and the Health Department, which we claim we supposed to be following. I didn't make a recommendation for masks for the entire county. I just was trying to check, protect our employees. That's all I wanted to do. That, this is not a mask mandate by Adams County. It just was one for when you're in a county building. That's all I was saying. Thank you, Madam President.
And I understand the CDC is, you know, back and forth, so it's really hard to put a lot of faith into them. So I'm certainly not advocating that they're a great agency or doing a great job. From a liability perspective, if you're in compliance with CDC, you receive immunity. So I'm not telling you to do something or not, but that's just the law. It's if you're doing CDC, which changes every day or every week. But if you're in compliance with them, then, then you're immune from any type of liability.
Madam President, I could add some more questions?
Go ahead.
So if we have employees get sick and come to work and give it to other employees, we, we not liable for to get sued or nothing like that?
Well, you're gonna be liable from a health insurance standpoint, most certainly. So that's a, that's an expense for delegates that incur from, from our employees. I think that the liability is your, your greater risk is from people coming to pay their taxes or coming to file a lawsuit or whatever. You know, they catch it and can somehow trace it back to Adams County, and Adams County didn't have CDC guidelines. We may or may not be liable. I can tell you that if we are in compliance with CDC guidelines, it's lawsuits dropped immediately because it's, we got immunity from it. That's all I'm saying.
You know I love lawyers, right?
Especially this one, I hope.
I see a ham sandwich.
The four of our heads are wishing everyone by the same guidelines that we've been going through for the, when COVID started. I had an employee call me yesterday. His mother-in-law's in the hospital. His wife's gathered. He's been around it. I told him he's staying on.
Yes.
After this meeting that, you know, once we got through, we're still doing the ten, twelve day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that can stop that.
Then they should be tested.
Test. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're still testing, and then once he's, if he's not positive, he can come on back to work. Even though he's still around his wife or don't have anywhere to go or.
Let me ask this.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get something together and, and go to each department. I'm gonna send it out, mass email, then I'm gonna go to each department and explain exactly how we're gonna do it with. If he could get, it's about quarantine, and it was very different, difficult last time. You have a family. Some people have another house they can go to, some people. But you can quarantine in the same house as long as that person who is actually positive. But he does need to be tested, and you can, we can get together and you can give me his name. But if he can, um, test positive, I mean, negative, and he can make sure he can isolate himself, meaning they can't use any common areas. Like his wife or mother-in-law, whoever stays in, you know, their room, and he kind of does all the other things.
Mother-in-law's in the hospital.
Yeah, so.
See, my, uh, uh, Madam President Scott, tell me if I'm wrong, when we was under that declaration, uh, before, when, when people was allowed to, uh, get off work in, in the county paid for, we ain't under that no more. When they get sick now, they got to take their own personal sick leave.
Yes, I told Raven that.
But we still going through getting tested and.
Well, they gotta go through her now. She have the test.
Yeah, and they do, they have to take their own sick leave or vacation leave. If they have sick leave, they need to take their vacation leave. So, and, and, and the leave that they have.
Yeah, I think that will expire.
Expired in December. Yeah, it is, it expired in December.
I'll tell you and then get him to tell you.
Uh, Madam President, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Raven, I think it'll be real good for you to send out that to each department head because.
I'm gonna have a meeting, because I felt like last time that we were talking about the task force, I mean, what we can do different. And I feel sometime last, um, like the last big input, it kind of, you gotta start with the top. You gotta set an example with the top. The department heads need to be educated so we can trickle down. So they know what we're doing and we're all on one page. You don't have employees showing up to work like what you have within the class. Hey, I was sick, but I'm still coming in. So, you know, we're not being, not paying a sick time. That is having a lot of people still coming to work sick, especially if they don't have sick time or they don't have, or they don't want to use their PTO. So just trying to get to those department heads so they can trickle down and educate their employees that, hey, this is a serious matter.
Yeah, I, I just see it as a keep getting worse, and I'm gonna have to come back upstairs. I'm gonna go back on Zoom. I can't see myself giving up and taking it to my mom. That's all the question.
Another thing.
Unless y'all give us some dividers down here and separate all this stuff. Uh, the obvious is that all these people in this little small room, we ain't got no business in this little small room. Especially if you don't have a mask on. You know, I have a cousin that gave it to her mom. She, her mom died. She ain't recovered yet. Her, her mind is, 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 she ain't recovered yet. So Madam President, can we get some dividers up in here or something like that?
We talked about this morning.
Yeah, I need to be protected up in here.
Take ourselves. I mean, I see them everywhere else in the conference room, and that's something I had mentioned, that we need some dividers to protect ourselves.
I have two more things, just with the vaccinations. If, if you guys know anyone who needs a vaccine, you know, or interested in a vaccine, let me know that also. Jefferson Comprehensive have given their word that, uh, I've been talking to Ms. Krista Cook. If we have anybody, especially a group of ten people, they actually bring the mobile unit. So if y'all know anyone, just let me know and we can get, um, get that scheduled. The last thing, this is a request, um, that with us doing the COVID screening now, just a question of me and my nurse just can get one designated parking that says medical, so that we won't have all these people coming in the building. Uh, preferably, um, I mean, we can just use this. It can be a temporary spot. It's nothing that we just have to have for next, for years to come. But something so that all these people won't have to come into the sanitation building, that we can actually gown up and suit up and go out to them and do the swab.
I don't see no problem with that. Nothing great. Who's it at?
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Um, Mr. Bradford.
I guess Raven wants to open. I guess I'm gonna close on this COVID stuff, right? Say the best one. Good morning, everybody. Uh, I do have a couple of things, uh, to caveat. Uh, the nurse practitioner Raven Campbell stated, um, I got an email, disturbing email this morning, uh, from one of our healthcare providers here. They're hurting our nurses. And, and it's, it's bad. So, like, this morning, that was one of the reasons I did present to, uh, Madam President, uh, emergency declaration for the county uh, due to COVID nineteen. I feel we need to go ahead and get back into that mind frame of being able to help the public, being able to hand out more masks and stuff like that. And a lot of it is due to our vaccination rates. Uh, we got a lot of events coming back up in the county and the city. And we gonna have to, personally, Supervisor Gray was saying, we gotta learn to protect people from themselves. And, you know, I've been following this for going on two years, and I've seen numbers, I've seen things. Even though the CDC put out those guides, when they put those guides out, they put the guides out because they expect everybody should have got vaccinated. But when everybody don't get vaccinated, which we got low vaccination rate, it puts a strain on. You know, I know everybody don't like wearing the mask. I don't like wearing the mask, but, you know, we as leaders have to do something, sometimes. Making some tou- tough decisions is hard. I know, you know, but that's what we put in these positions to do, make tough decisions. So I know I make a, I present to you guys some tough decisions. I know we all get beat up about it. But it's not to do it just to be rough on people. You have to look down the road. If you just looking, because tomorrow it promised to nobody. And I base my recommendations off two years down the road, three years down the road, see where we're gonna be at the end point. Uh, so at this point, I want to make a recommendation that the Adams County, uh, do emergency proclamation, uh, for COVID nineteen to prepare for the Delta variant.
You heard the request on the emergency management, motion from Supervisor Gray? Can I get a second? It's, it's just, all it is, 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 it allows him to go back and be able to hand out masks, sanitizers, and all that kind of stuff.
It gives the county a, uh, certain abilities and powers, including doing things that you otherwise couldn't during the standard. And a lot of it is having to do with helping pride that people as a person.
Okay, got a second by Supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All the papers are out. All opposed, nay? The ice have a motion carried. Anything else?
Uh, like I said, I want to make sure we try to, you know, get everybody vaccinated, uh, you know, much as we can. Uh, thank, like I said, we talked to task force. Uh, we're gonna be pushing out some, some great information and great, uh, strategies to try to get our vaccination rate up, you know, and we know there's a lot, been a lot of mistrust out there. Supervisor Miller brought a great point of trying to get our local doctors and nurse practitioners saying stuff instead of hearing from, you know, some of us. And we also gonna work with the city and put some great campaigns out there, and we just hope all the electric officials out participate in it if you got vaccinated. Because we need to really push this. You know, I think right now it's tragic. We may have maybe two Delta variant cases, that confirmed cases right now, uh, in the county. And I know a lot of people's looking at, a lot of those may be coming from the influx of, uh, migrants, people that's coming from the border. You know, like, uh, Supervisor would say, they coming in, they just bringing me hot. But those numbers are counted towards the county that they come in and get tested. So if they have a hundred inmates come in, a hundred get tested, if a hundred is positive, those numbers count towards Adams County. And we can't control it. We've been asking the CDC and some kind of guys, don't do that because it makes you look bad. It makes your numbers go up, and it hurts your economy because people see your numbers go up, they like, man, going to Adams County, and we getting laid as a hotspot. Even though those numbers are contained and isolated, but we still get the credit and bad rep for it. So I've been fighting for that for a long time, and they not gonna change that because that's, that's a legislative thing. And hopefully, you know, you guys on U A can try to hit, push that too.
And you, you, you can't tell us what, what those numbers are? If, if, if it's at the ICE center or something, you can't tell us? If, if, if it's at the ICE center or something, you can't tell us or can you?
No, no, what I'm saying is the state has stopped giving us that information.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, that's what I'm saying. So I'm going by the way we.
There you go.
Right, we used to do things, but yeah, we used to get those numbers, what they got and where they at, so we can try to ease it. But like right now, if they just say Adams County got two hundred people, I don't know where the two hundred people at. And it's kind of hard when you try to do any kind of contact tracing in your community, see where we need to go. Like it's an apartment complex, we need to focus on that. We have no visibility on that. So we trying to, you know, put things in place, you know, to try to help curb, you know, a lot of this misinformation down about the vaccination and the virus and stuff like that, because we are a tourist county. And people, look, they just, they just start going on website, seeing, you know, if you're a hotspot or not. So we trying to alleviate that. So I just need y'all help on that also. That's all I have, Madam President. Put me in first.
Thank you, Ray.
Yeah. Do they have sanitizer, hand sanitizer and mask?
Yeah, yeah, we, we're stocking up on, we're getting ready, uh, for the fall.
We had an empty meeting, my guy. We had them last week, the guys was asking.
Okay, yeah. You can, yeah, just, just holler at there, give you, give them, get your stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, tax collector. Tax assessor.
Okay, uh, good morning, Madam President, Board Supervisor. I'm Larry Hughes, Adams County Tax Assessor. I have, uh, here with me today was Peggy, my personal property, and also Wayne Harrington, which is the appraiser serves. And we also gonna have Monica Dennis from Tri-State. She should be online with us today also. So she, uh, could we check and see if she's online now?
She is.
She is?
She is.
Yes, someone not here.
Okay, great. How you doing? Great. Uh, on the assessment for the Adams County recap for 2021 has been completed. And has been completed, I'm very proud of what we have already done, but I also wanted to do the certifications that the board, to the board. Uh, this is certified that the Mr. Department of Revenue has received from the county assessor the correct copy of the recap for the real and personal assessment roll. And above name file with view for 2021 and the best of my knowledge and the best belief, subject to preparation and supplemental real role reflecting the implication that Larry Hughes has successfully is not in default with making the files for the assessment role with the board supervisor. It is your discretion to make that and allow and pay salary for the, uh, the assessment. Now, the tax assessor office has been doing a real good job. We were kind of behind when we first came out the shoot. But we have kind of caught up. We are in compliance and I'm very proud to say that we did a good job if everybody was working together. So that was really good. Uh, Mr. Herron and Monica with Tri-State and also helping to update everything on our land roll electronically. So that was pretty good. Now, for us to fund that, we need in order to keep our office still in compliance and keep us rolling just like we should do, because we've came a tremendous, tremendous way along ways. So what Ms. Dennis was trying to do this morning, it kind of go over some figures with you, tell you a little bit about the mapping maintenance and land use as far as property splits, uh, the delta interface and what we'll be responsible for this year and what will be exempt once we get started. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna let Ms. Monica, uh, take over from here and kind of explain to the board what we're trying to accomplish. But I do want to thank the board very much for all committed from putting together and working together as S A team. And thank you very much for that help. And Ms. Dennis, she's gonna finish up with us. Are you with us?
Ms. Dennis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you can go ahead.
I thought, I, I could, oh, I couldn't hear very well, um, there's a lot of background noise. Um, I'm Monica Dennis with Tri-State Consulting. Uh, if I'm covering something that Larry already talked about, forgive me, like I said, I couldn't hear very well, but, um, we had submitted a scope of work through Mr. Hughes, um, for the, uh, twenty twenty-one D, uh, to map those, uh, for the twenty-two land roll. Uh, we gave him the scope of work and a price for that, um, and I believe that's what he, he talked about. Are there any questions on the scope of work or?
Uh, let me go over the figures with them on the map lengthness and the land use. Go over the figures with them on, on that part. If there necessary, do we need to do it now?
Okay, Ms. Dennis, did you hear what Mr. Hughes said? He wanted you to go to, over the figures with the map, map list, that map.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, I actually not hearing. But the figures are, um, to do the twenty twenty-one D, a year worth of, and worth of days to take the mapping slips and, you know, do all of that. Um, the figure is, um, and, and do the land use update for those split parcels, the figure is thirty-eight thousand dollars. For, for Tri-State.
Okay. And the maintenance?
That, that is, that's what's called maintenance. That's not maintenance, yes, ma'am. That's maintaining your, your, uh, current map to be in compliance with the Department of Revenue.
Okay. Wayne wants to say something?
Go ahead.
We were also interested in using our, the mapping system. Monica, I explained to them on the mapping system to be an additional six thousand in addition to the thirty-eight, you know, to include the mapping. And the Delta, that's what the D map interface and the mapping change form, there's a one-time charge fee on that. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. The Delta's fee to interface with the AS four hundred, for us to interface with the AS four hundred and the Delta, uh, camera system, Delta had to be, um, I believe that proposal is, uh, five thousand dollars from Delta, uh, computer system. Um, and that, that allows us to interface with the AS four hundred and have access to that information and be able to upload to that, uh, system. The, the other quote that I gave you for the six thousand dollars was you were inquiring about putting the, uh, map online, uh, on our, uh, T S C map on the website, uh, and that's what that fee is.
Okay, is, is there any other maintenance fee afterwards, um, from Delta?
Um, I believe so. I, I.
There's a hundred dollar, hundred dollar maintenance fee on your software for the, uh, for the interface part of Tri-State software and Delta software, so everything can be electronically, well, you're paying for your service to have electronic transfer of everything. But just like on your computers throughout this county, with Delta, you have a maintenance program. Something happens, updates, et cetera. And just with that mapping system, I believe it's a hundred dollars a month or twelve hundred dollars a year. Now, that will be continuous. That will not be just a one-time fee. But the other amount she was talking about will be a one-time fee, I believe, a little over five thousand dollars.
Right, okay. All right. Ms. Hughes, I'm actually just questioning. Okay, if we, uh, this is Tri-State we're talking about. If you're using Tri-State, what is our G I S person out of the soil and water conservation, what's he be doing?
Wayne will go over there with us also, but the G I S is more of a geographic information system. It's more of a information that's put into the system and then it comes back with your mapping. It's showing you parts of the land. The Tri-, I mean, cadastros are a little more different. They have more of a boundary line for us, it's like, but Mr. Harry gonna talk to you a little bit more about that part of it.
Everybody pointed his knee again. Uh, the, the GeoPortal, it, it's, it has served its purpose. Uh, as I stated earlier, back probably a couple of months ago, we were in the, or back in the early winter trying to get this mapping completed so we can get you a land roll and some figures for your budgeting. Uh, it's not cadastro mapping. Cadastro mapping is tax mapping. Uh, with the Tri-State system, I believe they're in forty-something counties just in Mississippi. Uh, I'm in several counties working there everywhere I am. Uh, access to that on the website, it's very user-friendly. Um, the system we have now, I don't, I can't even remember what Monica told me, she might could tell. I don't even know if she can get to that point with, uh, a report. But there's a lot of, uh, land lines or what we call parcels in the tax industry that don't even have identification numbers on that GeoPortal. And that's gonna be a process just to work through and when we get to them, you can't even pull it up on the GeoPortal because it's not in there to pull it, uh, by PIN number, parcel number, address, et cetera. Uh, also with the Tri-State and Delta interface with each other, everything's, can be electronically transferred. We won't have three or four people doing data entry in the land roll. And just like anything, the more keystrokes you make, you gonna have some errors. I mean, you gonna have some human error, but just have more accountability and at the same time, a, a good product for the public and the county. To achieve what the tax assessors supposed to do is come up with a more accurate value of what we need for the land roll, for the values on the land roll.
So GeoPortal, G I S, Tri-State and G I S, will they be overlapping or we, you said we no longer would need them?
In the event you decide to go with Tri-State, you would, Monica might can clarify this. Uh, she has the information because it is county information she got from the G I S guys to do this previous mapping for this land roll and that's county-owned property. Uh, you will not need that GeoPortal for the tax office. Whether it's good or bad, everything has pluses and minuses. Uh, but you would not need that with this cadastro. Again, it's not cadastro tax mapping. You would not need it, that's your question, Madam President.
You have a question, supervisor, supervisor?
I do. Okay, uh, the update for this thirty-eight thousand is for the twenty-one year. That story?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let me, let me ask you another question. When the twenty-two year coming on, you have to do the same thing or?
You'll have to do another contract. That, and if you decide to go with their mapping, uh, accessory to their general maintenance, I, I think it's what, six thousand?
Yes.
So it'd be forty-four thousand a year. That would be the total.
Like a fee every year?
Plus, yes, ma'am, plus your one hundred dollars to Delta for a maintenance, a hundred dollars a month, excuse me, yes, ma'am. But, uh, that will be the total for that, with public access on the web, on that six thousand.
Uh, my question is, uh, if you're looking at that, what gonna be the, uh, salary of, of G I S? Uh, for the guy we use, what we use low? How's that salary? What kind of salary that is if you having to look at that? Because some gonna be a wash if we use it, because you pay so much money over here. It's gonna be so much money we're not paying. I'm just trying to get a figure on that. Then about enough?
Yeah. Looking at, when we got this drug ban and appropriation, you look at forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Forty thousand?
G I S.
You say forty thousand, six hundred and what?
Forty thousand, six, six seventy-seven.
And that's what we paying G I S?
No, that's what we paying for G I S, but we paid, uh, Adams County Soil and Water Conservation District, naming one thousand, but forty, forty thousand five, forty thousand, six seventy-seven, look like it's going to G I S. That's what it got on its appropriation sheet.
Oh, you really have a, 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 a.
So what we gonna have to do, uh, Madam President and the board, when, when, when we deal with appropriation, then.
We need to look at it.
We gonna have to deal with that during appropriation.
That's right. Well, I do the feeling to try and look at it so we can look at it.
So that, that's something we're looking to do in our budget time and, uh, get back with you all.
I just want to thank you all very much for your time and patience today.
All right, thank you. We appreciate everything.
Uh, two, two things. I think that Denbury, in fact, assessor, we're gonna announce to the, to the board what they, I don't know if they resolved everything, they certainly have some sort of pathway to it.
We need to go back into public hearing.
Yes, but before we do, Larry gave us a correct recit- capitulation of the, of the property. We need to have that approved and then approved the certificate to Department of Revenue.
Okay, you heard the motion?
That's not a, need a motion.
Need a motion.
Need a motion?
Yes.
So move second.
Got a motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor of the side? All opposed made. The eyes have it, motion carried. All right, I need a motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Got a motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor of the side? All opposed made. The eyes have it, motion carried. Okay, take it?
Yeah, yeah, you want to announce it?
Okay, thank you. Uh, members of board, thank you. I'm Jeff Trotter again for Denbury. Uh, I met with Ms. Heckwood, we reached agreement on a couple of points, but we also have agreed that there are a few other points to work out, which we're gonna try to accomplish over the next couple of weeks and then report back to the board. Uh, so I guess, Scott, the appropriate thing would be that we'd ask for a continuance or?
Or continue your life and you can get back, get back to us.
Okay, and we'll do that. So thank you very much for your time today.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Got a motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor of the side? All opposed made. The eyes have it, motion carried. What do you all need? Uh, Gaines said, supervisor Gaines. Yeah, the close to public hearing.
We didn't know if Monica would sit online or not.
I think Monica will sit online.
Okay, she can leave. No, she's off.
She's off.
She's off. Well, she's still on, but she can leave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Back to you all. Okay, Mr. Dale.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Just have one thing, uh, you know, office is coming, well, there's office now and, you know, we usually have heat for summertime, uh, so just trying to see if you want to, if we start getting, heating deck over a hundred degrees during the day, that you wanna maybe use a safe, uh, safe room for a cooling shelter. Just trying to get y'all opinion there so, so we can get, probably volunteer, try to get things set up if we do decide to open it.
I don't know. I know they're looking well, man, that, 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 that real, real high stuff supposed to be.
Pulling it down.
Perfect, not a way long, really.
Well, I'm saying that'll give us time if, if it do start, you know, rising again. So we just putting it out there.
If I have any questions, and, um, cover it, assess.
What I'm saying, you know, they come, you know, you're talking about Delta, uh, very arrayed and, uh, you talking about, you know, COVID restrictions and then opening it up. I mean, you just gotta, I mean, we actually gotta look at and see what's, what's, I mean, what's gonna be best for the county. I mean, we gotta do what's best for ourselves and too, but I mean, what do you recommend, open it up as, under that, uh, in the times that we in? Is that what you recommending us to take into consideration?
We're just trying to see what, what you wanna do, because I know, uh, I think we opened up as a warming shelter when we had the freezing stuff going on. And, uh, but it'll be during the day, pretty much just opposite of, of, you know, warming shelter.
I think, I think you're trying to say opening up during the day, going to get it so hot and everything. But, you know, they have their restrictions in the safe room for us with COVID because they have the sanitizer, they have the masks, uh, they do separations and stuff like that. Uh, I, I noticed they did that when, uh, they had that freeze, you go over there, they had their, uh, sixty-four, they had them with masks on and sanitizer and stuff like that. So I think we were just talking about the hot part of the.
Just want to do a motion if, if the heat is six thousand, rather than over a hundred and ten.
That's correct.
Yeah.
You got a motion by supervisor Gaines? Can I get a second? Second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor of the side? All opposed made. The eyes have it, motion carried.
All right. Okay, that should give us time, you know, to, to start getting people in place if we do have, open it up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, Mr. Tam, come with A L R.
Good morning, board.
Good morning, everybody.
Pretty good. Uh, we had a transport volume explosion in July that occurred, increased by over forty. Increased by over forty transports, largely due to either COVID or COVID-like symptoms and people going and being checked out. Our response time in the city is now minutes and fifteen seconds with eighty-seven percent compliance. And the county is thirteen fifty-three on average with ninety-three percent compliance. We have been continuing to isolate ourselves, we do have three employees out right now with it, much like we did in June. These are three new ones, all three of these exposures, just like in June exposure, are outside of work exposures. They're being exposed by their children at home and then we're having to isolate them just the same. So we continue to take our isolation precautions serious. We are one hundred percent masked up in our offices, in those trucks. Uh, and we're, we're using lighter mask in the office, but any patient contact, any patient contact now requires N-95s again. So we're going to the particulate mask with all and every contact, no matter if we get an isolation notification or not. We're assuming that they're positive until otherwise found out. We've had some challenges, as stated earlier, with the hospital and their hurting, with their nursing staff. This is not just local, this is national, we're having to go further and further with these patients. We did transport one to Mobile in, in July. So, uh, everybody's starting to kinda get packed up with patients and it is creating a little bit of an issue. So we've come up with a targeted group that's gonna include ground, air, and hospital staff. We're gonna meet on a tent and come up with some direction and some, some ways that we can kind of better and cohesively work to get patients moved outside of this area if and when it calls for it. So we're not reacting, we're proacting, we're still ahead of the curve, we're still good to go. There's no health threat that we can't assess and handle in the community, we just wanted to let you know and be aware that we're taking a proactive stance on this. I do wanna call highlight to, uh, replacement of one of our staff. I told you in the last meeting that I was hiring a new admin assistant, it's gonna be part of kinda making our offices flow good. She's a local individual, born and raised here in the county, taking school, courses right now at Alcorn, and is gonna continue doing that to pursue her own degree, at which point hopefully I won't lose her, I'll be able to retain her. Uh, but it's Vanessa, Vanessa Scott, uh, she's been a breath of fresh air, she's currently in training right now. I just kinda wanted to highlight the fact that she's in there on board and kinda working with us as we go through. We did participate, and I wanted to kinda touch on this just briefly, we participated in two county meetings in which we asked Ms. King to come into the second one, which was the E-911 Advisory Board. And I do wanna say I appreciate y'all listening to, to Ms. Phelps, and I appreciate Ms. King's time and participation in that meeting. It meant a lot to us and we felt like we did get something accomplished with that. If y'all don't have any questions for me?
Have any questions?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Robin Dala.
Good morning, board. Um, just updating the board a little bit on State Park Road, contractor had run into a dump site out there on that project. Engineer department called the office, we'd looked through and could work it through our illegal dump site grant. So, uh, contractor cleaned it up, we paid a tip and fee and we're gonna get fully reimbursed for that illegal dump site there on the site. So I'm just updating the board on that, but we did take care of that this past week. Kempero will be in around August the sixteenth to do the second spraying throughout the county. So I'm hoping that's gonna help with the grass, going to the tooth spray and I did find some money in my budget that I could go ahead and do it this year instead of waiting in next year, so I'll be here around August the sixteenth. Morgantown Road, we had, uh, MDOT had that science project, Morgantown Road, it is complete. They came down, looked, took pictures, uh, everything's complete, looks good out there. We have had a couple of calls saying how well the signs look and, you know, so, um, that is complete there. I have employee that left, um, last week, and I would like to see if I could, uh, replace him.
Prepare to replace up the road manager?
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion.
Yes, ma'am president. Rob, I've been thinking, man, uh, with what's going on and dealing with a lot of, experienced people for operating equipment and whatever we're taking, it's gonna come to a point where I think Dave Cox said is, we gonna have to find individuals that's willing to work and we gonna have to train them how to do the job. Still going out there trying to get somebody experienced gonna stay here for two or three months and then gonna be gone somewhere. So that, that's just not, we gonna have to just start training individuals how to operate equipment and all that kinda stuff, right?
Well, again, that's what I say, I look at it, people not loyal to anybody anymore. They come to work and they'll work six months or somebody offering fifty cents more or whatever. And, you know, I look at the same thing you look at, you know, it's, uh, how long, I, I mean, you know, I don't believe they'd ever see these thirty, forty-year employees anymore. I mean, they stayed here, people's been here and, and good employees. And like you said, started off at the bottom and worked their way up, made formans and things like that, you know, I just, I don't know what to do. Like I said, we, we try to make good selections, I think we did on the last selections we made, uh, those guys are working. I see it's a lot, we shorthand on North Side, but it's a lot getting done out there now. So I, I think we moving forward, we just have one or two more spots to fill. I still don't have that leave mechanic's position filled, mechanic out there wants that position. I thought I had a guy that would take it and money wasn't issued, we interviewed him, you know, and he went talk to his wife and like, you know, said he couldn't do it, I understand that, but, uh.
What position does this should be in the evidence?
It'd be a pot oil patcher, labor flagman, you know, uh, what it be?
All in favor of the AI, all opposed made, the AI has had the motion carried.
We done a lot of work in the Hot Water Bridge Road last week, had a lot of debris up under the bridge, cleaned a lot of debris out. And that creek had changed this route over the last several years and it's getting right up to the road. So I spoke to Mr. Gaines, uh, about this, matter of fact, he came out and looked at it. And, uh, ended up calling, uh, NRCS, got it approved for a creek stabilization, it has been approved for that. We submitted it and did get a call from Mike Green, said it was approved and it's right up on the road. So I'm hoping once it gets in place and we get some money, we might can move forward and get that done pretty quick. But that, uh, was last week.
Right, right, at this point, with, with what you see out there, could you estimate how much it costs right now? Because a year, uh, a year and a half later, it's gonna be way worse than that.
Well, and, and with that being said, I talked to Mr. Green about this and Norm was in town the, the day this took place, or the day before, and then Norm became the following day. And spoke with him about that and had him look at it the day they were both here together. And where it's at and the way it's cutting and the rainfall we're having, you know, it, it's, it's gonna be a lot worse, as you saying, within six months' time. So I asked him when the money come available, could we do this like we did MLK and move forward? And I'm hoping we're gonna be able to go that route since it's right there, close to the pavement now. If we wait six months and have half that road count. But it's just, like I said, the creek's changed and it's cutting, but like I said, we did still have creek stabilization out on Deerfield that we're waiting on now. So, but that's what I wanted to go with that route, uh, Mr. Gray, since you asked that question. Uh, and for getting that estimated cost, I don't know, it's, uh, it's kinda like putting, uh, some peak dikes in to divert the water back across and then stabilizing the bank, so it's gonna be expensive. My next question, I guess, is for Brent, on these group two EWP's, where are we?
Um, we're, I've got the bids for group two right here.
Okay, you have it, put today, okay.
I was, we're trying to advertise the group three this week.
Okay, and what did we decide on that seventy-two Oak Ridge? You know, I know we're talking about we're gonna have to do additional project, but then the toe with that other project that was done, what, what did we decide?
We're gonna, we're gonna group all that in and run it through this one project, but since then we've, uh, that seventy-two inch culvert, uh, no, the ninety-six inch culvert, the old existing culvert in there is, the bottoms rusted out. So we're, we're gonna need to replace that and all of that there, so.
And I guess what you're saying that it'd be the cost to the county? The cost?
The culvert would be under what we've done in the past or recent past there and trying to get them to cut all the dirtwork in there. There will be a head wall needed on the other side.
But the county's cost will be the same?
Yes, yes, um, yeah.
All right, and then on River Terminal, Majoka Road, Mr. Marlowe had a project there and he said we were waiting on right away at Eastmont, but we're not, I mean, we're not waiting on that, I think we've got that. Yeah, so where are we at with that project, do you know?
I do not know, but I found out, I thought we were waiting on right away and could go.
Are we here a couple of months now?
All right.
At least.
Yeah. The only other thing I have is last meeting, uh, group of residents, Forside, Myrtle Drive was in here. Uh, I did go out that afternoon and meet with the residents out there and looked through the area and, uh, looked at the lot, they were complaining about the overdone lot and met with them there, um, and they were asking about speed humps. I'm gonna see if, uh, Mr. Floyd can meet me after the meeting and maybe go out there and look and see if it's all right with the board about the speed humps. It's already some speed humps in place, but I just want him to look after I met with them and their concerns or where they were looking on another one. So I'm just gonna let the board know, if he's got time, I'm gonna go out there with him to do that. That's all I have, uh, if they shall have anything.
I said, uh, maybe it can be, uh, Mr. Ford can come up. I don't, you know, we had asked about, I mean, I don't know if both y'all question, and I think it tied in. The striping that we talking about on Steam Plant and the Jeff and Tyree's Road that we talking about earlier. And I know y'all were waiting on something, uh.
They, they wrote their route and they put in there some recommendations of what roads they had and I think you're waiting to get.
Yeah, and that's what I wanna get into, I mean, you know, we traveled a lot of those roads, a lot of them leave striping, I mean, you going through that way, especially those roads, there's no striping at all, basically everything is gone. And if we're not gonna strike, we need to put something, place some reflectors or something. Because especially when it raining, you, you can't tell where the middle of the road is and so, uh, that's why I'm concerned bringing it back up.
Well, what you can do, what you do is a state aid road, is we can program that road for a striping project, if state aid would allow a striping-only project.
Well, that's what we.
Yeah, we can, if, but I have, if the board give me authorization to program a road for striping only and see if state aid allows to do it, then that, we have no problem doing that, we can do that. And it wouldn't take long to do a striping project, but then you, of course, depending on how much the budget is, it had to be beat out and all that.
Yeah, well, you know, I had, I think Rob might have, uh, I lived in Tyree, I know, uh, Steam Plant right there.
And we Tyree, the steam plant through that area, we got part of Steam Plant.
Right there, it, it was definitely needed striping, so, uh, cause up and down, down that area, it, it's no, uh, no striping, so that's kinda what I need to, you know, we've been, kind of, been kind of, that's, uh, actually since Vash, if COVID hit with the striping, and then we brought it up this year and there was something there, so I just need to see what we need to do to kinda move forward with that.
Robin, aren't you possibly have a list, I think it's, uh, from that four-year loan plan?
I do have a list of striping and roads that need overlaying and things like that. And like I said, state aid reports, they give them back and then the engineer firm will get the copy of that too, of what roads they recommend with striping on to, and that's what we're waiting on just.
Well, I know, uh, state aid, I know, uh, part of Falls Mountain Steam Plant, what about Tyree does everywhere, I don't know. Sure how much Tyree's state aid is not?
Well, it is on that, that MLK on the out toward the Churchill area, who that area is.
So is board, is board giving me authorization to program these road, these three roads for striping-only projects for state aid, using your state aid funds?
Yeah, I think they already, they already did that.
You know, on his report, he, he, he extended, but I think he's saying you have to work through state aid, is what you're saying.
The process, you can't just go out and do, you have to submit a program form, get some information for, submit to state aid. They approve that form, say you programmed, this fund's allocated for that project and then, you know, then the project is designed.
Heard a press of the IMS. A motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, and a discussion. All in favor of the AI, all opposed made, the AI has had the motion carried. You can go ahead, why you, uh, Mr. Ford?
I mean, only thing I have is we received notification, I mean, some correspondence, I think it's Meg from the Road Department sent an email to NRCS requesting the same update. They came back and said that, I think, due to the amount of rainfall that county behind, so once they are able to allocate the funds or get the application process to us, then they will, they don't have, they don't have a till to date at this time, but as soon as they get it, they will get, get it back to us.
He done about to clear over here.
And then I think the only other thing I have is the last time we were here, we talked about Burke Road, whether or not the county wanted to get that project submitted as a ERBR project. Out of the five roads that were closing, that was the only one that was in question. I don't know if there was supposed to be some sort of update on whether or not we want to submit, still submit for that one or not.
I think it is that we wanted to still submit it, cause we say it's kind of bugging well, we did the first one and thought we'd go with it, so.
So I did have, uh, Rob and I have a meeting Friday, uh, Thursday, uh, that, about Burke Road, and I'll talk about that in my report. Unless you want me to do it now.
Oh, you can go ahead and sissy up, yeah, with this now.
So, yeah, as you know, we signed the MOA, what, two months ago probably, uh, with, with MDOT on this flat grant. And, uh, Rob and I had a conversation, I believe Thursday, with Randy Dickerson, who's the district seven engineer. The way they, they lay out this flat grant is due to the fact that the county engineer is not a full-time county employee. We have to look at three engineers for this project. So, do you have any other, I mean? We had to do that on federal grants.
Who's for that?
Who are you talking about?
IMS.
What, what, what we having to do?
But they're not an employee of the county, they're contracted.
What was Mr. Marlowe?
Contract.
But we, on federal grants, we had to do this before. If you remember Angela, you'd have to score all your various engineers and do that, you gotta do it to your current team. It's a, it's a scoring system. It's, we've gotta score three, basically get RFPs from three engineers, engineering firms. And once we do that, that engineer's gonna have to have LPA training, do you have that?
I'm RFP, sir.
You are, okay, well, that, that speeds it up, cause the, the next class is on twelfth and thirteenth, that's when you went to, in the past. So once we did that, then we would have to set off a, what they call a kickoff meeting before that contract is signed with the engineering firm. Um, at that point, that MDOT would be able to, uh, go directly into contact with them as the project director. So I guess at this time, we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
To the RFP? So I'd like to make a motion for an RFP for the Burke Road flat grant.
You heard the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Milton, second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion?
Yeah, I need to, um, you say we have to send a RFP out because?
We have to look at forty.
The engineer is not a county employee.
All in favor of the AI, all opposed made, the AI has had the motion carried.
So not to make the ERBR, right?
Yes, we're gonna still do that, we have a motion for that.
A motion for that.
So.
Got a motion by Supervisor Milton, second by Supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed nay, the ayes have it, motion carried.
One of your criteria around your RFP is gonna be familiarity with the project, he's making an application.
Anything else, okay, Mr. Grant?
Yes.
To Jordan Kazin.
Let's see, this morning we received bids for the group two EWP's, and I was gonna open them and read them aloud on that. These, these EWP's include Cemetery Road, sites ten and twelve, Churchill Road, site one, and Ohioy eighty-four, sites two and three.
You had a sheet on?
Yes.
You only sheet, yeah.
Sheet and then your estimate.
Yeah, and then your estimate.
I'm gonna have to get them to send me the estimate. Let's see, the first bid I've got is, um, Camo Construction, here, uh, their license number is, um, twelve, four, twenty-three dash MC. And I got a bid bond. And he has, uh, acknowledged the denim number one. Bid price on this was, uh, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand and fifty-four dollars and two cents.
Uh, what is your estimate?
I do, I, I'll get the office to send that over on those.
Okay.
Usually it's five sites on this one.
Yeah, it's five sites. Yes, this, the next bid I have is Garrett Raiver, and we, we only had two, two bids, so this will be the last bid. Um, his license number is, uh, two, twenty-five, forty-seven dash MC. He does have a bid bond. And he has acknowledged the denim one. His bid is, uh, one million, sixty thousand, and nine hundred and nine ninety-four point three zero, thirty cents. Um, at this point, I'd like to, um, recommend taking the bids under advisement upon review to, or toward the, not to proceed. Let us on the board.
You heard the request? Second by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, uh, like I, like I mentioned before, uh, I got a problem when, when, uh, when, when somebody bidding and got all these open things that they haven't finished up, and then get adding on to that, I got a problem with that because it ain't gonna never get done, and we already behind, and, and that's a problem for me. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just letting it know.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'd like some clarification on that, Gray.
What you need?
I'm just asking, sir.
I mean, uh, we got Brook.
Last time it was brought up and I said something, and you said no names were mentioned. Now this time, it seems like it's directly pointed at Camo.
Well, if the chief said wait, we got.
I mean, I have, my, I, I wear my shoes fine, I, I mean, everything that needed to be addressed by Camo.
Can you get Johnson, sir? Can you get Johnson, sir?
Uh, uh, did I do what then?
Johnson, sir.
The first group, he didn't.
Yes, sir, we got it.
You got the first group?
Yes, sir.
You started them?
No, sir, I just received the contract last week, just got them last week. Mr. Gray, I've got the pipe, and I'm waiting on the structure to be built for that, for that site, for that site. I just got the contract, just got them last week, sir.
Whoa, the.
They were lost, they were lost, they had to be re, they had to be, did the category.
What was the process, you said it was lost?
We waited, we, yeah, so the bid packet was lost, and we had to redo a bid packet there, and we waited, we waited, first thing, we waited on right away, and then we had to redo a bid packet, and now we're, he's got, he's filled out the contracts and waiting on a, uh, two bonds.
Waiting on a bid bond.
And they should be in.
I mean.
She didn't get the bid bond until you got the notice.
No, I'm waiting on a performance and payment bond, I had to have a copy of the contract for them to provide them so that they could provide.
That's right.
I should have those this week, there, there'll be FedEx to me.
There's a penalty for not completing the projects within a certain time time, isn't that right?
Yes, but we'll, 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 we'll get the bid bonds in, we'll have a, uh, pre-construction meeting, and we'll issue a notice receipt, and from then, the time will start, on the, on the project time will start.
I, I just wanna go on record with you, sir, that if those contracts would have been executed in a timely manner, that lady's house would be done right now. I'd be done with that contract. It's only three sites, and they're very small, and I promised that lady, when, when, when I went down there and talked to her, when we did a site visit myself, and, uh, one of my employees, I walked around, and I promised that lady, ma'am, if we get this job, we'll get to you first, I promise you that. And I, I, I'm gonna live up to that promise, but I can't do anything until I get the contract, sir. So I don't want it to sound like it's me dragging around doing, not doing the job. Soon as we got everything down here on Main Street, everything's situated. We moved in last week, got all the pipe installed, every bit of it, in one week, a hundred and fifty-two foot of seventy-two inch and twenty-two foot deep. It's all in, and we're backfilling it right now.
I've been over there.
So, I, I guess my point, sir, is everything, and I've, I've worked diligently, very diligently, and you, you personally, and so, and, and a couple of others, I've had this conversation, anything that needs to be done, y'all got my phone number, please call me, I'll address it. I will. I worked diligently trying to get this board's trust, if that, if that's the word to be used. And that, and that, and that Camo is gonna do whatever we're bound to do by this contract, and, and I'm, I went above and, but, I went above and beyond on some things, I really have.
Well, this is the other thing I'm saying. We now finished with big group view, and that's your fault. Now, the ones out there on Oak, Oak Ridge and whatever the case may be, they waiting on another bid to bid this end, where you can go back, since you bid that one, and correct some stuff that need to be corrected out there, is I'm correct?
That, yes, sir.
Okay.
But it's, but it's nothing, it's nothing that you can do.
I'll let you talk, I'll let you talk, you talk.
Okay.
Now, then we gotta go and do three more with Johnson and whatever else in that group. Now we bidding on another group, when we ain't finished nothing else, and you bidding on another group, come on, man.
I, I mean, I've got the, I've got the manpower and equipment to do it.
Well, why we ain't finished Brookview if you got all that? Go finish Brookview.
Brookview's finished, sir, I've gotta go, I've gotta go put that sock in and do that, that's one day, that's one day, and that's not even.
Is it in?
Fix that sock like we talked about in that.
Well, it's not finished.
I know, but wait a minute, wait a minute, that's something I'm doing above and beyond, that ain't even in the contract, Mr. Gray, and I agreed to it, I mean, I told Robbie and, and you, sir, that I would take care of it, it's one day, one day.
Wait a minute, hold up, let's get something straight, what is he talking about, Robert, is that not in the contract? Help me out.
It's, it's inside the work zone, I'm gonna say that.
Thank you.
And.
But it's not out, right, Robbie?
Well, but I'm just saying, JKS has been there, and I've been there, Mr. Gray's been there, we were all there, and that's what I'm saying, within that work zone, that was an issue and a hole and a wash that was occurring. And you did say you'd address it, and like I said, it is in the work zone now, JKS is like you, they keep saying it's there, but when they set those boundaries and they do it, and put that scope of work, to me, I feel like it's in there, but you're gonna address it, you're gonna fix it, and it won't be a issue.
That's right, and I said it.
So, so what you trying to tell me, then, the, the year is not gonna start until he finish?
That's what they say, when the punch list is done, then the warranty starts, same thing on the levy, when the warranty, when he finished the warranty work or the punch list.
It's finished.
Three weeks ago.
Yeah.
That's when the warranties were supposed to start on that.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, somebody got to be held accountable for his work not being done in a timely manner. Now whoever that is, if it's JKS, if it's Camo, whoever it is, need to be held accountable, cause I'm tired of playing these games, man.
Well, a big part of the party has already been held accountable, Mr. Gray.
Say what?
A big, one of the big problems that we have with timeliness has been addressed, so, with that party. And this party is under contract to finish these projects within a certain period of time, or there's a liquidated damage or squalls.
Okay.
And NRCS is involved on the timelines of it, Miss King can speak on that, she spoke, she called me last week on it. Um, I checked with NRCS on it, we do have the extensions to get it done, I did forward her email this morning.
Right, I just, this ain't my first rodeo.
Oh, I know that, but I'm saying.
Hold up a second, hold up one second, now, we've been getting the extension after extension after extension after extension, so that is not in a timely manner, come on, man.
And, and I agree with you there, like I said, NRCS is the one emailed her or called her about it last week.
This whole, this whole, it's like, all these things should be finished by now, we getting extension after extension after extension, then when the weather get bad, we gonna use the weather and say, well, the weather bad, we can't do it now, these people that, that need this work done, they don't understand all that.
I asked the question a week before last.
What's that?
On these three sites that you was supposed to be doing, and that's when you let me know the contract that's in law, I didn't know any of that, I asked him when he was gonna get started, he let me know he had all the pipe ordered, the design of the box was designed, they stopped that because the riser wasn't left, wasn't put on the box to put where the water went in, so then it was redesigned.
Well, no, I mean, it was just a note made on.
That's what I say.
And it needed to be added.
Added to it, and then, so the box, that's what he waiting on now, too, is the box, and then like I said, he just got his contract done, and like I said, that's.
The pipe, the pipe?
Pipe, yeah.
Got the pipe, and that was.
You talked about that, you said you waiting on the pipe, and once the pipe get there, you gonna, gonna take care of your bidding, then something else came up with this.
That's right, I, I, I don't have, I didn't have the contract, but y'all, 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 think about this, this bid, this year I was bid on like April the fifth or sixth, and here it is August the second.
Yeah, what I'm talking about.
Well, but.
I'm not saying it's your fault.
Okay, and I'm glad we cleared that up, I'm glad we cleared that up, but I want everybody to know, I could have been done with those, those would be over with, that lady would be, she'd have her back, her side yard back, and, and, and some of her backyard, all that would be over with.
Well, I'm gonna say this. Uh, this lady been going through this, I won't say the wrong thing, but she been going through this, and Robbie know what I'm talking about, and this lady's house about to fall in the back, and somebody gonna have to be held accountable. Now, she done went from this board, and every time she see the mayor, or whoever she see, she reaching out for help, cause they calling me and telling me, I'm telling the man it's gonna be, get started in two weeks, that two weeks done went from another two weeks to another two weeks, and she calling everybody, cause she scared her house gonna fall in the back. Somebody gonna be held accountable, and it ain't gonna be the county. So, Mr. Turner, whatever you need to do, you need to do it, cause I'm, I'm tired of playing around with this, man.
We have the notice of proceed now, we're ready to go? When's the notice of proceed gonna get issued so they can get started?
We should have the bonds in, in the next.
Day or so.
Today or tomorrow, or, or maybe Wednesday, and then we can, we can go ahead and issue a notice of proceed, that we might have, uh, a pre-construction meeting and issue the notice of proceed in the meeting.
How long will it be for the box to take?
About a week and a half, I, as long as I got the, did we get the?
Yeah, we got everything.
You already got that back to Logan?
Yeah.
Alright.
By the end of August, when it's permitted?
Sir?
By the end of August, then, whether it's permitted, this project should be on Johnson Circle?
Oh, I mean, if I can get that box on in here within the next couple of weeks.
Let, let me say this, we had, what, twenty-two projects, is that correct?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one projects.
Some of them got mushed together into.
Yeah, and we started this, uh, what, in January, when we, uh.
Last.
Last October, okay, but I, I recall it, I think January, when we, uh, hired IMS, and we decided that we was gonna let, uh, Jordan Kazin keep these twenty-one projects. These twenty-one projects, with my understanding, all twenty-one of these projects was supposed to be done by ours, am I correct?
You close, if you ain't, you right there.
You know, August, that is supposed to deadline for all twenty-one projects, and here we are still dealing with these projects. And, and, you know, good question, how many have, of those projects has been done and completed? We shouldn't be going into almost another year with these projects, and the way it looks is, we will be. And, and the longer you go with these projects, the more expense.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's gonna cost, we keep amending and amending and amending, we cannot continue to do this.
So what groups, how many groups do we have, I know we've got some of them pulled out on MLK, what groups do we have left, we got?
We got the groups three and four, which are, I believe eight sites left.
And you're done, and you're, so you gotta restart designing on three?
We got, we're, we're gonna try to advertise the group three this week.
Well, we don't have, we have rightaways on group three?
Um.
Or legals, I mean, and flaps for group three, so we can start on our right away?
Yes, I, I think we've got, we've got all of, made of all of those, yes.
Should be nine more sites left, is that correct?
Yeah, eight or nine. I think nine, nine, correct.
Is it group four? Is that it?
Group four, we're, we're marking all those. So they're, I mean, they just been, we have to go back out and add, add to them. And I mean, they're just, they're the last sites we got to finish there.
Well, shooting group threes and they're legal when we can start on the acquisition of it.
Alright.
So, I mean, we got, we put them in timeline, get all the stuff completed. Because I'm saying it's in the report, we hand it to IMS so they can get started on those as well?
We don't have to do something different. We don't have to do something different with these sites. You know, if, if they cannot get these sites done, we need to, you know, turn some of them over to IMS.
Madam Presidente, they're doing the best they can do. They don't have the personnel to do this. Let's stop playing games. They do not have the personnel to do all these sites.
And that's why we're gonna have to do something different.
And it got me and this man up here got a, a different opinion or something. And it ain't his fault, and we, and we had it, and, and it ain't his fault, but, I mean, you gotta call it like it is. I mean, how much longer we gonna go and, and continue to do this?
So Scott, we need to look at that? Or give some of these projects to IMS?
Now, I'll talk to Brandon. They ain't about passing the group four over?
Brent, this ain't nothing personally against you either, man. I don't want you to think there's nothing personal. There ain't nothing personally against you either. But it is what it is. I mean, my twenty-one years, I ain't never in my life seen nothing like this with EWP projects. Never in my life.
If December's supposed to be the completion, then after the hundred and twenty days.
It's not gonna happen. Okay. Alright, we'll move on. Do you have anything else?
Um, Mr. Bellwood, phase three, the, uh, last paper. Pay estimate on the, for the project there, releasing of the, uh, retaining. Was that, I think it was, is that on the docket today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And that's all, that's all I have?
That's all you have?
Yes.
Okay. You have anything else, uh, Mr. Ford?
One other thing, when we submit to ERVR, we got to submit a resolution. Authorizing you to submit this on behalf of the county. And I just want to get, uh, confirmation on, I guess, the board authorization to do it. And I'll send it over to Ms. Dan, and she can get your, your signature. But I just want to be official, uh-
Okay, you heard the question. Got a motion by Supervisor Gray.
Right.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Brandon, you have anything? Mr. Gordon? Okay, thank you. Sheriff Department. Mr. Mack, Mr. Bell.
Good morning, Board. I've got a couple, a few things here. I've got, uh, two officers going to a law enforcement peer support, uh, training. It's four days in Gophor. Their per diem is gonna be two thirty-five apiece, and I need to get approval on that.
You heard the request of the Sheriff Department. Can I get a motion? And a motion by Supervisor Gaines.
Right.
Second by Supervisor Wilson, enter discussion.
What, what is the names?
It's, uh, the class is August the ninth.
Your names are fifteen?
Oh, uh, Avery Campbell and Edgar Winston. It's gonna be a total of thirty-two hours training, four days.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Where are they going?
Gophor.
Yeah. You did know about testing. Once they get back, they have to be tested.
Okay, I, I'll be sure to tell them that.
Before they return the work.
They phone it, yeah.
Okay, uh, the next thing is a new hire, Keith Bradford. He's gonna be a jailer in the jail.
Alright, let's see if I have that information.
Okay. I've got the request authorization, but my copy's not signed.
Your copy's not signed. Keith Bradford, I have it.
Okay.
You heard the motion?
Aye.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Go ahead.
I didn't know if you wanted to do the hourly rate and the yearly, but it's, it's all in that factor.
I have it, I'm on the sheet.
Okay, this other one is a budget amendment. I think Charlotte had already talked to Ms. King about it. And it's originally, she was, uh, requesting seven thousand to be moved. But they went over that amount. And the new adjustment amount is gonna be twenty thousand at this time. This is on the food budget. I think Charlotte did, since you're, uh, she emailed you, Ms. Harvey?
She emailed everyone. She emailed everyone, knew about that.
The budget amendment in the amount of twenty thousand at that time. And it'd be, uh, zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, six, nine, four, food preparation.
Say that one more time?
Right.
Say it one more time?
Uh, zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, six, nine, four.
And this one, then?
Oh.
That's food preparation.
Twenty thousand dollars?
Golden?
That they asking us them men to carry them out? To the end of the budget, you?
I think the normal is probably sixty detainees, and it's up to eighty detainees. And that's, that's where the difference is coming in.
That's twenty-one thousand?
Yes.
Plus, there's an additional snack that the juveniles are supposed to receive.
That's right.
You heard the request of the Sheriff Department. Can I get a motion? Got a motion by Supervisor Wilson?
Right.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, enter discussion.
Yes, Madam Presidente.
Okay, Supervisor Gray.
We in the budget period. And, uh, there's gonna be something we're gonna have to look at real, real close, how we spending our money. Because we trying to, uh, compensate our employees and, and we gonna have to cut back on something. And I don't know what it is, but we gonna have to cut back on something. And if you thinking about giving the kind of raises that I'm thinking about giving, then guess what? Every department gonna have to cut back and, and, and where we can compensate our employees. And food might be one of the places we might have to cut back on. Thank you, Madam Presidente.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Anything else?
Okay, the last thing is the, uh, letter report. District one, eight, district two, thirty-two, and this is bags. District three, nineteen, district four, fifty-three, and district five, fifty-four. Uh, Robert McKinney didn't actually come back to work until July the nineteenth. So we've had other people filling his position, and this is the number.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have?
Alright, I need to bring up a menace for a public hearing. Can I get a motion?
So move, so move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Go ahead, Scott.
We've got several of them. Uh, I'll just call them down, there's six twenty-nine, Highway sixty-one North. Is anyone here for that? Highway six twenty-nine. Highway sixty-one North. Uh, I got a picture of it. It's got overgrown, it looks like a dilapidated building and overgrown, uh, crass and everything like that. Notice was made on them, so I need a motion to find that it's a menace and-
So move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray.
Right.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
One forty-one Tubman. One forty-one Tubman. One forty-one Tubman. Same thing, notice is it went out. There is a branch that's on top of the house. It also looks a little bit dilapidated, so you have a motion to declare the menace. Have that nuisance abated?
You heard the request?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay. Three and four, Hazel.
I'm calling.
That's your, okay.
Mm-hmm. And I called you, and I went out and cleaned it up.
Okay.
And then, uh, I didn't call you back.
Okay.
And then I went out again and cleaned it up. I have pictures on my phone, if you'd like to see.
Can we see those pictures?
Yes. Let me turn my phone back on.
You know, Charles, but, uh, bound it though.
I'm not real good with these phones, so. Some technology.
Okay.
It's coming. You said three and four?
Mm, three and four.
I'm just on, I, I, I'm four.
Do you know if three was cleaned up?
I don't know, uh-
Been been right next to it?
It's three nights right next door to me?
Yes, ma'am.
No, it was-
Still dirty.
Yeah. And I'm telling y'all, it's so bad out there with meth. They have destroyed this house of mine. They went in, they told the electrical, they took the air conditioner out of the house. It's just horrible out there. Someone needs to do something with all the drugs and stuff out there in Cloverdale.
You know about this next petition here?
Okay, I'm curious.
Which, which man, what's your name?
Here you go.
My name is Donnie Shos. That's industrial.
S A D W.
Uh, S A D W S.
It's Donnie.
Cleaned it up. Okay. You know who's district then?
Donnie.
So you're-
Donnie. Donnie.
Donnie.
Goodbye, chief.
Yes. Okay. Supervisor do three.
Well, do you? She's actually evidence for three. That one's still a bad thing.
And across the street, I don't know what that is, so Hazel?
Yeah.
It's really bad. So it may be the rest across the street. Because three ain't a real sight. Yeah, it gotta be some bad.
So we'll adjudicate three and dismiss four?
Right. Okay, you heard the motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
And if you called last week, I was actually out last week, so I'd be apologize that it-
That's okay.
Because I could've told you, sent Wes out there to take a look. But yeah, well, but thanks a lot.
Well, thanks y'all. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
See if I can walk now. Alright, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, so move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, enter discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, any public comments? Public comments? Public comments? Come on.
Name and address.
Stationing at your address for the record.
No, Chapman, twelve oh one Sunset Boulevard, Natchez. My public comment is about the mandate.
Say that again, he didn't hear it.
Chapman, C H A T M A N, twelve oh one Sunset Boulevard, Natchez.
She got it.
She got it?
Yes, okay.
This is my first time coming to a meeting, and I just wanted to come see how everything worked. And seeing everyone here that is selected by the people. And seeing like me, everybody's giving their own personal choice, instead of what's really involved. Like the word mandate. I don't see any different mandate than if you go to the ballot and say a commandment. That I should not drink or do whatever. So this is something that affect everybody. I don't see why you all having a problem. I, I don't understand that. I really don't. And that's not a good example to show, we telling our kids. We tell them that this is the law, this is what you do. So you can have your personal opinion, which is you entitled to, but you're elected by the people. So seeing like me, you need to learn how to separate it.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. You said you asked this board to mandate, is that what you asked it?
You know, be a leader. Show me example. I'm sitting up here now, so I'm there, so I'm not. And so both their opinion, well, I don't know about the science that they say this and say that. I don't have an experience with sciences. I don't think anyone up here got a degree. So you just do what they say do. You go to your doctor. You gonna do what he or she say do. You don't know them, especially if I knew them coming to town or something. And I don't, I just, I don't, I don't understand that. I really don't. Especially we say we love each other. You may not never get it, but what if you take it home to your mom or to your dad or to your children? Because you might be sitting next to someone feel like you do, and you don't know whether he or she got it. So to me, it's, it's their, their metric. And it's showing love one to another.
I, I think that, um, for eight months, we've had a vaccine, maybe a little longer than actually. And we have begged people to please get vaccinated. Now, people that are vaccinated have, do get sick, they do carry the virus. But, um, they usually don't get very sick at all. They're not hospitalized, they're not dying. And, and people will not go to get vaccinated. Whether it's a religious thing, whether they're just scared.
No, no, tell them about the vaccine. I'm telling them I'm wearing a mask.
Yeah, well, the doctors say it's not even effective. I've talked to a lot of doctors and nurses over the last week. They say, we're all sick. We wear masks every day.
I don't see you have one on now. I understand what you're saying, but that's my point. You're saying one thing, but you're doing something else.
Well, I'm, I'm vaccinated.
I am too.
And I, and I still feel like I'm thirty years old, even though I'm not. But, uh, I, I think y'all-
All the same thing. So I'm seventy-five years of age. I'm diabetic, and I got a lot of other stuff wrong with me. But I wear my mask. And if I did what's not, I still wear it to respect you. But I'm not gonna ask you, give me a, a, a list of your health. What it is that you have a problem with, because it, that's, that's-
It's a free country, and my choice is not to wear a mask.
But guess what? Then your constituents should know, you should voice that opinion.
Uh, uh, believe me, I hear from, when we, we put pass the mask mandate.
I'm telling them I passed the mask mandate. I'm telling them what you should do.
Well, that, that, everybody knows I'm not gonna wear a mask, because I don't wanna wear a mask.
And you should go on record with-
And most of my constituents agree with me.
Well, makes it, you should go on record to say that. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, you, you got me on record. I wear a mask.
And everyone else they feel the way. That's all you should do.
But I am gonna encourage people to continue to get vaccinated. I, I, I talked five or six into it last week. I, I, I talked five or six into it last week. They were holdouts, didn't wanna do it, they finally did it, and I'm glad they did it. Cause I think they're a whole lot safer for it.
And you probably would've been even better if you had a mask on and you were telling them that, and so this way, cause we can. When you get vaccinated, you can still pass it on, and then you pass it on to more people than you did before.
I think that's the silliest thing in the world, people walk into a restaurant with a mask on, pull it down to eat, or, or bin between bikes, I think that's silly. You cannot do anything.
Do you know how it goes, how it get passed? Right now, when you talking, you could be infected someone right next to you, cause it coming from the droppers, it coming from you.
Well, that's not the only place it's coming from now, it's on surfaces all over the place now.
I'm just, I'm just going with that one, that's enough right there, but that's all I have to say on that for you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman, appreciate your comment. Okay, comment to the table. Supervisor Gray.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, and, uh, I, I, since we, uh, supposed to be in the budget period, I think it's time for us to go on, uh, make a decision on whether we gonna get these time clocks or not. Uh, I know we hadn't had a budget meeting, but I think it's time for us to go on and get these time clock. And, uh.
Are you, are you putting that to a motion?
Do we have to have a motion? I thought everybody agreed that we wanted a time clock, do I need a motion? Do I need a motion? So move, so move.
Got a motion out there by Supervisor Gray? Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. You need that in the budget, make sure we had a, a funding for the time clock.
Okay, the policy for time clocks too needs to be adopted, so it circulated a couple of times. Y'all wanna have it, like next meeting, we might be able to make sure it's what everyone wants to do?
Yes.
Need it before we install the clocks, obviously, I say that.
Yeah.
And when people want something added.
And Madam President, uh, you know, I always, uh, go over my sympathy list to the people that I know that died in this community. Their parents, and went on to wherever they went. My sympathy goes out to the Nova family, the Mayberry family, the Gardner family, the Williams family, the Matthews family, the White family, the Smith family. And our former, uh, Chancery clerk, Tony O'Byrne, and his family. The Givens family, the Walker family, the James family, the Bakes family, the Bowden family, the Herndon family, the Allison family, the Joffrey family. And this list is getting longer and longer every time I read it, so, uh, we, we all know that we thirty percent poverty in Adams County. And we have all these underlying health conditions and all that, and, you know, so the only thing I'm gonna say, everybody know where I stand. Wash your hands, wear your mask, continue to stay your six feet from whoever, and please, go get vaccinated. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Supervisor Gray. Supervisor Miller.
I only had two things, and I spoke to Mr. Donald about it before the meeting, and then also the, uh, the flat ground was the only other issue I had.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Wilson.
Uh, Scott, one forty-one tub in the circle, what's, what's the next thing on it now that we've had the hearing?
Uh, Robbie's gonna get a screw out there and clean it up.
Okay. Alright, while we're on Robbie.
And there's a, I mean, you have another one that's outstanding, it's gonna be coming, unless they clean it up, it's gonna be coming around the next meeting, board meeting.
Uh, okay, um. Carriage lane, they say they got a couple of trees that are leaning near the road, or, and, and I, I tried to tell everybody, we, we've got that, got a plan for that, uh, to cut the leaners and, and, and pick up all the snags from the ice storm and what have you.
I was gonna ask, I only got the his, I forgot to do my report, but where are we at with the leaners and the hangers, with the lady and contracts and?
Yes, in my report, you're talking about once we just did the bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna get approval with that contract, I, I thought we'd already approved the contract, evidently not. With the.
Those are.
We, we heard the company would.
That, those are. Yeah, okay, I just, they didn't know when we were gonna start it, I'm not gonna say how soon people are asking. Okay, uh, Bluebird Drive, same one that's asked for a speed bump before. Though somebody planted all those live oak trees, and now they're all out in the road. You try to take a moving van through there, and, you know, they're gonna tear their trucks up. Are we responsible for cutting those? Trimming those trees back?
What's overhanging in the road, yes, we can take.
It's, it's getting, it's getting pretty, it's getting pretty exciting. And the last thing for you, Robbie, is, uh, I had somebody complain about how bad Combe Church Road is. I don't know exactly what spot I told my ride out there and look at it, but I have, that was two days, or yesterday they said something. Okay, and, uh, I'm gonna encourage people once again, like, Mr. Gray, please go get vaccinated if you're not vaccinated. If you have underlying conditions, please wear your mask, um, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you Supervisor, well, Supervisor Gaines.
Uh, yes, I just come to, probably, uh, was gonna piggyback on what, um, Ms., uh, Wilson had about the hanging the limbs, but Scott's gonna take care of that. I also wanna bring the attention to the board, also, you know, we were, um, and I don't exactly know where we hit on it, uh, we'll have to wait till we get the answer for the, uh, money that we presented on Morgantown Road. I remember early this year, we was talking about getting the bond issue, and I, and I know we was, uh, possible if we didn't get the money. And I know we had, uh, spoken the last meeting about, uh, doing some recreation, end roads with that, but I just wanna clearly remind us, you know, that, uh, I think Morgantown Road affects some, somebody that we know, everybody in here, we get a bunch of calls about it. So, uh, I just wanna make sure that we keep that in perspective, uh, uh, just put it in our mind, just in case something don't happen. You know, we agreed to, uh, try to get some kind of bond money, get it done, and I just wanna keep us all on the same path on that. And, uh, we got three or four different avenues, and, uh, hopefully, uh, one of those avenues will come through. And, um, Robert, we, uh, I did, uh, have you doing the cold patch, some of the cold patch in my area? And it's actually working a whole lot better than the rocks and the tar, and, uh, I, I think, uh, when it moved around, we need to kinda look at it during budget season, maybe, and, and I think you'll do something in the other areas, and they'll probably see how it's working, it's staying down, I mean, we went, the guy went to the conference on the coast, we talked about the patching and stuff like that. Uh, the cold patch is actually working a whole lot more, staying in the holes, it's not raining and pushing out. And, uh, we've been doing this, so I think I, I've been kinda out in the, monitoring that, so I bring it to our attention that maybe we need to look at that, um, a little more cold patch versus what we using right now, cause I think everybody at the table here know what we use right now don't work. It actually don't work, and, uh, so that's, I bring that up, but, um, I would also like to say when it come up, you know, COVID. I like to tell people, encourage you, cause I can't, that's one thing where you can't, and, um, you can tell people, but be honest with you, when it comes to the mask mandates and signals, people pretty much do what they want. And it's nothing that you really can do, but I say this. I've been fully vaccinated, I think everybody just tapped, been fully vaccinated. Nobody had to tell you if you feel like you got an underlying health condition, you have people close to you that's not to put on your mask. So I mean, you know, I have two children that's fully vacan, that, I mean, that's wearing mask, wash hands, and everything else, and they got COVID. They got COVID, and I know they stayed hand washed and masked up and stuff like this, so it came up, but I would encourage everybody to go get your shot, do your necessary precautions, and you should have a responsibility, even though it's not a mask mandate, if you feel something is wrong, you need to take care of yourself. Nobody should have to tell you that you gotta take care of yourself, you should be able to take care of yourself, because certain things, people tell you, people not gonna do. If people come and encourage you, come inside the door, and tell you what to do in that house, you might not like it. But if you say, if you gonna do something to prevent a fire in your house or you that, you're not gonna leave the stove on, you're not gonna do certain things. So this is your life that we dealing with. You should definitely look out and try to save yourself, do the necessary thing. I recommend staying away from crowds and big crowds and stuff like that, uh, so you do what you do. Uh, as you see, COVID is real, COVID is spreading, the numbers are going back up, so I would just ask the public to do what it takes to keep you safe. And, um, that'll hear, uh, now you just go back to the president.
Thank you. Uh, Chancellor Clark, Brenda Lewis.
Hi, yes, Madam President, um, I know I'm kinda echoing what a couple of other board members have already said, and just a sad week last week, Adams County lost an incredible man, and my thoughts and prayers go out to the O'Byrne family. Um, I was thankful and blessed to be able to call Tommy, not only my mentor, but my friend, and he will just be greatly missed. Um, so it has one item today, and that's just to have the sheriff's more reports, but also minutes, please.
Okay, you heard a request of the Chancellor Clark, could I get a motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. That's all you have?
That's all.
Alright, Deputy Clerk.
Aye.
Page team. County head town. Scott, slow.
Piggybacking on what Warren was alluding to, uh, there's gonna be needing a, a funding source for Morgantown Road one way or the other. It's a matter of how much from, we're gonna come derive from local sources versus federal sources or state sources. We're currently soliciting those federal and state sources, and, but at the end of the day, you're gonna need additional revenue to make that project, project happen. So it's definitely something we need to consider, I know that there are other road projects as well that, that are pretty major that need to be done. So, you know, that's something that we've been thinking about and doing it, and doing it, how we do it, you know, we'll come down to the board, how they wanna implement it. Did we get a motion to approve that contract for the limb removal? Kinda get a motion to, uh, approve those contracts that we, we awarded the bids last board meeting with Dozier, and then, what was the other one?
Just retic.
Yeah.
Do we have the contract?
Yes, they, I felt some of it too.
Heard a request, got a motion by Supervisor Milton, second by Supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried.
Okay, and I think the rest of the stuff we got, I got an item to be determined, but I think the rest of the stuff we got handled in the middle. Wish I had.
Uh, Madam President, I would ask you, now that we approved the contract, do you have any estimated time that they will, uh, start the debris, uh, the lens and hangers, that's what I.
I happen to know that guy, we'll give him a, give him a nice shout out and say, when, when, when you gonna get, start the contract.
I was wondering why the package, and we was on the board, so pretty much everybody in there said after that they was approved and had a contract within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, that they can go. So I just wanna make sure that, uh, if the contract has been awarded, everything's ready to go. Once you get the paperwork there, we should be, if you get it going this week, by the end of this week, they should be cut.
I think they say immediately they will start once they got the contract.
Immediately, that, that correct.
Yeah.
After you were there on the board.
They said immediately after.
I'm, I'm working on it with them and another project, and they started as soon as we.
Yes.
I mean, like that day.
Okay. That's all you have?
Aye.
Okay, okay. County Administrator, Angie.
Yes, I have, uh, three things. The first thing I would like to spread across the room is the certification of reimbursement for the funds that we disperse, uh, to the AOC, for the CARES Act.
Okay, you heard the request of the county administrator?
Aye.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried.
Okay, and the second thing, back in October twenty, we purchased some, uh, decamp, decontamination system, uh, that was not in the budget from Blue Monster. So I would like the board's approval to amend the one twenty-eight fund to cover the cost.
In the amount?
For twelve thousand nine ninety-eight.
We heard the request of the county administrator, can I get a motion?
No move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines. Second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried.
Okay, the final thing, MAS has scheduled a one-day seminar on the American Rescue Plan, and it's gonna be held on September the eighth, twenty twenty-one, it's a one-day seminar. Now I would like the board's approval to attend the seminar.
Okay, that's like any county supervisor or county administrator that would like to attend that.
The eighth?
On the eighth, yes, uh, September. I have that also here too. Uh, can I get a motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. And that is for, uh, county board members too. Alright, anything else? That's it.
Madam President, I just wanna say this, uh, uh, I keep saying it, and I'm gonna say it again, but I left this part out. We wanna give our employees raises. And everywhere I go, I don't care where, it's that everything going up sky high.
That's right.
So please, when you ordering stuff, if you don't need it, please don't get it. But we trying to take care of everybody, cause, I mean, you know, people got something left in their budget at the end of the budget season, they just go out there and spin it, spin it, spin it. Please don't do that, cause we trying to, we trying to make sure we take care of our employees, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, on that note, I know that this board has been wanting to conduct more hearings on the budget, and Angie and I talked about it la, not last week, it wasn't here, week, two weeks ago, about setting some sort of hearings up that, that y'all wanna do. Angie, would we be ready next week to start having some budget hearings?
Right.
And I was thinking we could start with, we usually, you know, usually do road, bridges, Sheriff's Department, uh, you know, that kind of thing first. But is there a particular order, I know there was big, big talk about the raises.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do the appropriations too, deal with the appropriations, we just get that on our way out.
Yeah, that usually only takes about an hour.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and I'm probably wanting to take that out over there. Okay.
Just starting next week, y'all start having schedules, morning or afternoons available.
Morning.
Got a morning meeting?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I just got there.
Sure, here, buddy.
Yeah, we, we trying to hear the Supervisor Gray's end over there.
I got it.
Okay, yeah, morning's the good.
Okay, we'll set three of, three of them up.
Okay.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, something like that.
We could do more than one. Okay.
Yeah.
We can have a handful of appropriations, maybe Sheriff's Department, or the local department on Monday, something like that.
Okay, we'll do appropriations in the road on Monday, then Sheriff on Wednesday, and then we can schedule on Friday. I mean, these are, if you have them like this, it'll be on the. We don't have to do it on Friday, we can wait till next week.
Thursday?
Yeah.
You can do it Thursday?
Do it Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. I got me, to you, sir, I mean, we can go back to back, it doesn't matter.
It don't really matter, yeah.
I mean, we don't have to have.
We have something to do on Tuesday.
Oh.
Well, I'm good, yeah.
That sounds great. Yeah, don't get it out the way, don't, staff it. Okay, that's all?
As long as the Sheriff's Department and Road Department is not on the same day.
Right.
Yeah, I can deal with lightness too, I don't have to deal with lightness, okay. Uh, I have, uh, something here from the natural single citizen, they have a celebration. Uh, it's starting today through the sixth, and the time is from ten a.m. through twelve p.m. And that's for the single citizen, it's just celebration. Okay, I have a request here from the inventory clerk to remove, uh, the corners, he lost his eye patch, cause they lost his stolen report affidavits.
Another?
Uh, he say it was, his tongue was broken in.
Oh, okay.
And stole this item from his home. So I need to get a approval to spread this across the minutes.
One sec.
Can we find those on, find it all?
Yeah.
I think he already tried to find this one here.
Yes, uh, that what happened when I brought up before about people losing their eye patch. Uh, with that, he had the eye patch, and the next day, I was supposed to come back that morning and make sure it was finished tracking, cause it was updated. Uh, so it was taken home with him. Uh, the following day, I had a wreck, so about, uh, a lot of things got backed up, so about a week or two later, when I came and called him and, uh, so I can get him, get it set up, the following day, it had got stolen. Uh, so that's why I made a, uh, extra effort to make it, make sure all those devices are set up to be tracked. But that's what happened with that situation.
So I need a motion.
You have a motion here?
You had a motion.
I made a motion, yes, yeah.
Okay. Who, who made the motion?
Me.
Supervisor Gaines, Supervisor Wilson seconded.
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. Okay, this is from the juvenile correction officer, they, this is a pay increase change, pay rate change. And I think this is when they move, um, uh, their six months. It's, uh, the hourly rate will be eleven ninety-seven, annual rate twenty-four eight ninety-seven. I need a motion.
Who, who is this for?
Anthony Woods.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, uh, motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carried. Okay, there's also another correctional office with the juvenile detention center. Her name is Caitlin Green, she's going from part-time to full-time with the hourly rate of ten ninety-two, annual twenty-two seven thirteen. Need a motion?
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, and a discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. All in favor say aye, all opposed may, the eyes have the motion carried. This is a pay increase with telecommunication. Um, this is once they get their certification, her name is Jolanda Grayson. This was that, me, this was that? You sure? I don't recall it.
Maybe that was a travel, maybe that was a travel, she was going to do.
Okay, the hourly rate gonna be fourteen dollars, need a motion?
Send.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, and a discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed may, the eyes have it, motion carried. Um, this is with the drill court case manager, Wesley Pennington. This is a new hire at the rate of fourteen ninety, annual salary thirty-one thousand, need a motion?
Send move.
Send.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, and a discussion.
Somebody left them over there, they replacing somebody, uh, what?
Jalen.
Oh, it's in their budget.
Huh?
Jalen.
Jalen, okay. Okay, all in favor say aye, all opposed may, the eyes have the motion carried.
Bless you.
Bless you.
You all right?
Looks like some sort of training.
Yeah, but if, if it doesn't have anyone, that's something to say.
Madam President.
Supervisor Gray.
Did you, did you get that with, uh, Ms. Harris came by my shop and say she dropped a letter off to you? Ms. Leola Harris from Brown Moody Pilots?
Yeah, I did that to Scott.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you guys.
Yeah, I did. Do you know anything about that?
What?
That, that training, 'cause it's not what name and nothing attached to it.
This is for Krista Nelson, she wanted to do a training on how to conduct effective, uh, workplace investigations and understanding the final check.
I like to do.
So they, they, uh, online, so she don't have to travel. Each class is a hundred and eighty-nine dollars each, and it's in her budget.
Send move.
Send.
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 You heard the request, I got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, and a discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed may, the eyes have the motion carried. Um.
Madam President.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
This was given to me this morning, uh, it is a cooperative agreement regarding that Bieber project that we talked about last meeting. I'd like to get it approved pending legal approval of it, I just haven't had a chance to, to review it. I, it's with the federal government, I assume it's gonna be okay, but I'd still like to have a chance to review it.
Okay, you heard the request of the attorney?
Send.
Got a motion by Supervisor Milton, second by Supervisor Gray, and a discussion.
If you, if you don't approve it, you need to let us know now.
All opposed may, the eyes have it, motion carried. I need time this.
I'll, I'll grant you.
Scott, Scott's wanting to kill Beavers, right?
That's right, I can't wait. Beaver killer. What? That is part of this objection from the city. There's an application for one oh four, one oh eight Wall Street, evidently they're doing some sort of, they're replacing the doors. I think that's Bill Murray's old office, they got sold or whatever, they're doing some renovations. I mean, if the board wants to object to this guy, fix him there.
No, that, that guy's gonna do it right.
Okay, do we need a motion?
No, we don't have to do anything, it's just.
Sounds good.
Debbie, I don't, very few of these have we ever objected to, I can't remember any of them.
Well, what do we have, anything do, why do we have some?
Well, technically, under the city code, since we're property owners.
Oh, we don't.
We, we don't own, it's not, it's, it's the property that's right next to us.
We're in the county.
You know, and so, we're in, you have a right to object.
I got it.
Typically, the county doesn't object to, we, we use that as a city map.
Okay. Also, uh, last week, I got a call from Manning, our lobbyist, and I think I reached out to the supervisors, uh, I couldn't get in touch with you. Oh, I didn't reach out.
The man failed.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, they're pumping it over.
We got some good news, uh, we was talking about the Morgantown project, uh, but we went up, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Scott and myself have talked to M.D.O. and the mayor about the, uh, Morgantown project. Uh, in the meantime, we asked that they do some striping just for the safety of that road, and, um, they did say that they would take care of it. They got a call back last week saying they would take care of the striping of the road. So, uh, Supervisor Gray and myself is gonna meet with, uh, Albert, who is the, uh, engineer with M.D.O. tomorrow at nine o'clock at Rocky's office, and we'll, they're gonna be, uh, going over the specs and everything of what they'll be doing to that road. So, in the meantime, we will get the striping for Morgantown Road. And I think that's all I have, uh, I'm gonna refer it back to the county administrator.
Just, uh, we'd like the board's approval to submit the application for the second round of the ERBRF. It's due August, the, the sixth, and the fire county administrator just text me and told me I need to get out.
You heard the request?
Send move. Send.
Got a motion from Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson, and a discussion.
Yeah, some of those we actually approved today during that ERBR, and that's what we discussed using as a second funding mechanism for Morgantown Road.
Okay, all in favor say aye, all opposed may, the eyes have the motion carried.
Well.
Madam President, I would like to say more, though.
Okay.
Uh, Supervisor Gaines brought, we had talked about this bond that we had discussed, due to bond issue, uh, for some road repairs and recreation. Um, I did see last week when the city got a really good intro on theirs, so I think as a board, we need to start looking forward at what our list may be and what our goals wanna be, 'cause I don't wanna keep putting this off, you know, if the rate's like this right now, we need to start looking at it.
I think, uh, the chairman had said that each one of us need to get together and, uh, decide, you know, what we wanna do with the funding. So, uh, I pretty much got mine together, what I wanna do.
Okay.
So, everybody need to decide, you know.
Well, that, that, that's just pending, we don't get the funding for Morgantown.
Yeah, uh, okay, yeah, that's what, uh, excuse me, Madam President, uh, that's what I was saying, that's why I brought it up, you know what I'm saying? Originally, we, we, we brought up that we was gonna do a bond issue for Morgantown Road if, if, if we didn't get the fund. So I know we, all of us looking for recreation, and we want recreation, but we also, I don't wanna end up not getting funded for Morgantown Road, and everybody else said, well, we gonna do this. And our original, uh, thing that we brought up, they said, hey, if we don't get funded, we gonna do Morgantown Road. I don't want us to get so far out and doing recreation or doing everything else, which don't get me wrong, I want recreation, but we also want Morgantown Road done. That's what, so that's what I brought it up. That was the number one thing, baby.
So the, so the, and I'm not, I do whatever y'all tell me to do that, I'm not trying to advocate either way. This, this is a decision I'll make, either you can hold this recreation and everything until we find out some direction for Morgantown Road, namely, not if we're gonna need money, but how much money are we gonna need for Morgantown Road?
Yeah.
Or you do recreation, then you do a bond issue for roads, 'cause there's other road projects out there that needs to be done besides Morgantown Road, I know Morgantown Road is, you know, it's high, super high road, I already believe me. Either do two issues or, or do it in one, that's. Yeah, I agree, I mean, Morgantown Road's an issue, we know that, but what we're talking about services this debt with was the money we were already committing for recreation.
Okay, okay, okay.
So it means, if you, it's just up to this board, how, definitely, no, no one says that you have to use this all for recreation, or you have to do Morgantown, you can do Morgantown Road. Definitely with Robinson and all these other road issues, or, or you can, it's up to y'all, you just have to get together and get us, uh, some direction so we can get back to our bond financing.
Yeah.
It's easy, Mr. Tanner, we, we, all, we wanna do Morgantown Road recreation and, and streets.
And we gonna put it in the bond, and, and, and at the end of the day, Morgantown Road gonna, may take it off.
I think we said at the, no, not because of my, I think you said at the last meeting, we suggested that you was gonna, we was gonna put in recreation across roads, uh, when we bought, you know, the bond, mother. That's the catch, 'cause don't get me wrong, you know, I got paid, I got, uh, Lord, I got pile of roads in there, but I know we had agreed about Morgantown pretty much, everybody in that, that district got several need payment. You know, I, I, I got several, you know, I got, I, I got several roads need payment, no doubt about that. And, and, you know, that's, that's something that all of us do, but you know, we had got together at the board, Morg- we heard so much about Morgantown, we done had rents on Morgantown, we done lost lives on Morgantown, and so we was, it was a priority, and that's, that's all, but we, but I do understand that we put recreation and everything else in so we can, it's not just for Morgantown, we can do our recreation and parks and everything else, so. But I just wanted to keep number, Morgantown that number one priority.
Okay.
All right, that's your, you know.
Anyway, so we're on, waiting to see if we can get funded for the federal or indoor state before we can do anything on that.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Supervisor Gray.
Uh, Madam President, uh, uh, we talked about this at the funeral, I think we need to do a proclamation.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, honoring Tony O'Burn, and please, get a nice, pretty frame and put it in.
Yeah, I mean, really do this, so.
I mean.
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray?
Send.
Got a second by Supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed may, the eyes have it, motion carried. I'm looking at this too, I think we need to attach a memorandum for that, uh, rescue. They actually got on here that a memorandum needs to be attached for the rescue money. Memorandum of understanding, that's what it is. I think that's something we already approved, right, that's already been approved. Is that right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I think we already approved, so I think you just wanted to attach when you fill out the paperwork somewhere. Okay, uh, now I need a motion to determine post-determination.
Send move.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray?
Send.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay, the eyes have it, motion carried.